Good morning and welcome. Welcome to this meeting of the Education and Children's Services Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Keith Robinson, I'll be chairing today's meeting. The meeting is being broadcast live and is available to watch on the council's website whilst we are in public session. A recording will also be available for viewing following the meeting. Members of the public and press may also record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, provided due courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance, in line with the council's published guidance. Please ensure you use the microphone which has been set up for you. Can I also remind you to speak directly to the microphone and please avoid putting anything such as IT equipment or papers in front of the microphone as this will affect sound quality. Please could you also ensure that your phones and laptops have been switched off or on silent? We are not expecting a fire drill today, in the event of the alarm sounding, please leave the chamber following the fire exit signs at the rear of the chamber. Fire evacuation instructions can also be found on page four of the agenda. Before we commence with today's business, I would like to advise committee members that we have had a change in the membership of our co-opted members. Andy Stone has been replaced by Kate Pereira as the Roman Catholic Diocese statutory co-opted member on this committee. Kate has sent her apologies for today's meeting, but I hope she will be able to join us at the next committee meeting in December. Public questions? There is no public questions been forward for today. Apologies for absence, substitutions?
We have received apologies for absence from councillor Penny Otten, Camilla George statutory co-opted member and Kate Pereira statutory co-opted member.
Thank you. Can I ask committee if there are any declarations of interest or dispensations, please? Councillor Byatt?
Thank you Chair, as previously, to declare that my wife is a member of the County Council Family Practitioner Support Team. Thank you.
Thank you, we've noted that. Is the committee happy to agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of June 2025? We take that as read? Item number five. Agenda item five is a reviver of the fostering and adoption services Suffolk. The objective of this item is to consider what actions the local authority is taking to fulfil its statutory responsibilities. To promote and safeguard the welfare of children whose needs are best met through fostering and adoption. To recruit and retain foster carers and adopters in Suffolk and to support foster carers and adopters in providing the best possible outcomes for children in care and those adopted. Prior to today's meeting, committee members met with the fostering, adoption and kinship teams to gain a greater understanding of their work. Please can I thank those that set aside time to talk to the committee members and for being welcoming, informative and providing valuable insight into the work of the service area. During the course of this meeting, committee members will have the opportunity to share their feedback from their visits. The key areas of investigation for today are shown on pages fifteen sixteen of this agenda pack. Can I welcome our panel today, but before we do that, there's members here who've never been to a scrutiny committee before. So I will ask the actual committee to introduce themselves, starting with Ashley at the end here, please.
Hi, I'm councillor Ashley Eaver, I'm the Vice Chair of the Education and Children's Services Scrutiny Committee.
I'm Peter Byatt, I'm a councillor for Peatfield.
Good morning, I'm Ryan Harvey, I am a councillor for Gunton.
Good morning, I'm James Reed, I'm a councillor for Gunton as well, so the north of the county is well represented today.
Good morning, with apologies for being late, I'm Jane Sheet, I'm Dawson Director of Education, I support the eighty-seven churchillian schools across Suffolk and I'm a co-opted member.
Morning, good morning everybody, I'm Joanna Spicer, I'm a county councillor from the west of the county near Bury St Edmunds. Keeping up the west?
Good morning everyone, I'm councillor Joe Mason, Haverhill in the west, which north and west is covered today, I think.
Thank you, I will now ask the panel to go through the same process if I may.
Thank you Chair, good morning everyone, I'm Sarah Jane Smithmore, I'm the Executive Director for Children and Young People's Services here at Suffolk County Council.
Good morning everyone, I'm Bobby Bennett, Cabinet Member for Children and Young People's Services.
Good morning everyone, I'm Fiona Van Den Hout and I'm the Assistant Director for Corporate Parenting and Youth Justice.
Good morning, my name's Glynn Smith, I'm Head of Service Corporate Parenting.
Good morning, I'm Sarah Ablett and I'm Service Manager for the Fostering Service.
Good morning, my name's Caroline Hughes, I'm the Service Manager for Suffolk's Adoption and Kinship Service.
Good morning everyone, I'm Sarah Crane, I'm a kinship foster carer.
Good morning, my name's Sam Brown, I'm a full-time foster carer and I'm also Chair of Suffolk Foster Care Association.
Hello, I'm Flora Winter and I'm an adopter.
Well, thank you very much all. Now we all know each other, I will ask councillor Bobby Bennett to make the introductory speech if I may.
Thank you, thank you very much, and good morning everybody, very pleased to be here today to talk about our fostering and adoption services. Firstly, just slight apologies, we are a little down on numbers of staff today, we have a very good selection of people here, but we are also in the process of an Ofsted visit, a focus visit, which means some of our staff that would normally be here are busy doing that. But I'm very confident that we've got the right people in the room. As a corporate parent, as all of us are, except the actual parents in this room, we have a collective responsibility to look after our children in care as if they were our own and today's scrutiny forms a really important part of that. And I'm hoping over the morning we will be able to share the good work we're doing in this space, have some challenge from you and talk about, you know, areas that you might want to consider recommendations. My priority since being in post in this space has been to really get to know our foster carers, kinship carers, the children. Not just listening to them, but trying to make things better, challenging to make changes where we can. An example of this is the work that we've done recently on the staying put policy. We can't solve every problem, but I'm hoping that through continued open and honest conversation, we continue to support our foster carers, adopters and children to the best of our ability. Who am I handing over to? To Sarah Jane to take us further?
Thank you Chair, thank you councillor Bennett. Just following on from what councillor Bennett said, I'm really delighted to be joined here today by so many colleagues to really celebrate the great work that's done in our fostering and adoption services. I think as most people know, I'm a children's social worker, so this is territory which is very familiar to me and it just feels like a fantastic opportunity to dive a bit deeper into the work that we do. Currently in Suffolk, we have two hundred and seventy-seven, what we would consider to be mainstream fostering households. I will talk about that as our fostering family because we are really, just as councillor Bennett has said, we're corporate parents. Do just over nine hundred children in care and also to our care leavers, so it's really important that we think about ourselves just like that. And just to say within that fostering family, seven households are also early permanents, foster carers, you're going to hear a bit more about that. But that's where we can really think about children who we are matching for adoption, being placed at the earliest possible time with foster carers who then go on to adopt them. Something in Suffolk, we do very, very well and actually I'm sure Caroline will fill you in a bit more, but regionally, we are we're really strong in the way that we do that. And importantly, as you all know, for children, we will always try everything we possibly can for them to stay with their families, their parents are the right people for them to be with most of the time. However, when that's not possible, our first conversation is always with wider family, with extended family. And we're really fortunate again here in Suffolk that we've got currently ninety-six, what we would consider to be kinship foster carers who are family members. And again, Sarah and Caroline will talk to you more about how that may come about, but it's really good that we're able to support family members to support the children from their families as well. So you'll hear more about that today, but it's important for us and I'm hoping what you'll hear also is that we walk alongside each other, we walk alongside our children and our fostering family and our adopters as well. So you're going to hear about many reasons why people wish to adopt and to, it's magic really for us to be able to help people come together as a forever family and you'll hear more about that too. So really welcome the opportunity for this scrutiny. Suffolk is a great place to, well, to live and to be, but to be a foster carer as well, there's always more that we can do. And we're ambitious and you're going to hear from Sam who's going to talk about how we try to walk alongside our fostering family. Listen hard to what they're telling us and to make sure that we can do our very best to support them, so thank you Chair.
Thank you. And now is the opportunity for committee members to ask questions of the panel. Councillor Mason?
Thank you Chair. There we go. Firstly, it was really, really nice to be able to attend and meet with the director the other day, so thank you for giving up your time for that. In the report, I think it has really good, strong evidence of strong practice and innovation. We've clearly got committed teams doing good work. But as I was going through the report papers, I did feel that one of our roles as councillors and scrutiny is to whether activities translate into outcomes and how we measure that. I do think we need some clearer performance dashboards. So I'm leading up to a question. So Ofsted previously has been regarded as good, strong innovative initiatives like VR training and ambassador programme. But as I said, the agenda pack was a little bit heavy on activity and light on outcomes. So for example, the foster carer recruitment activity is described, but the trend data shows that approvals are broadly flat. So are outcomes improving? How can we measure that over time? I do have some follow-up questions, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
I'll start, but then I'll hand over to Glynn. What I would say is that a large amount of this data comes to the Corporate Parenting Board. We've just gone through a bit of work to refresh that, to make sure that we're looking at the right data and we're looking at performance scorecards to measure, to measure the things that matter to our foster carers, but I'm happy to hand over to Glynn to add more.
I think the, one of the really positives about being here is because the message about the need for more foster carers, we are constantly trying to put that message out. We can't say what position we would be in if we hadn't done all the recruitment work that we'd done, if we hadn't become part of Foster East. So it is, the challenge for us is, is that there are not enough foster carers. And constantly, my colleagues are being innovative and working with all the options, we're looking at what works nationally, we're working with our regional colleagues and we know that our performance is very comparable with regional and national issues. And there is a national challenge around finding enough foster carers. Our foster carer cohort is a very strong cohort and a cohort of foster carers we can be very proud of. But it is in terms of, we watch year on year as we struggle to, we bring in new foster carers, but we do have, foster carers are getting older and changing what they're willing to offer us, so it's a constant, constant challenge. We would love to have another hundred fostering households, they're the sorts of numbers that we're talking about. But in terms of, so you're absolutely right and we're wanting to highlight, there is this challenge for us. We want to highlight all the time, we need more foster carers and we believe we are the best place for foster carers to be, working for the local authority. We are rightly challenged by Suffolk Foster Care Association and our foster carers about what more we should be doing. And we're working, and so what we're doing is saying we're very proud of our foster carers, our kinship foster carers who are doing an amazing job and our adopters. But we are wanting the message spread that we need more, we need more foster carers. We will be working hard to support them better and better, but you're absolutely right, it's a massive, massive challenge nationally, regionally and in Suffolk.
Has that answered your question?
No doubt that the teams are working incredibly hard and we should be incredibly proud of the excellent work that takes place. I think one of the challenges for scrutiny is for us to be able to look at trends over time. And so if I pull out, for example, approvals, deregistrations, placement stability, keeping in touch activity, maybe some elements broken down by age, sibling group, complex need, this would help, I think, us as councillors to see what is happening over time. I'm confident in what you're saying is true, but I feel that there's a little bit of lack of data to help us hold our hands in terms of purpose of scrutiny, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so that is indeed the data that Sarah Jane and her team get on a very granular level, I get on a level as a cabinet maker and member and then we take it to corporate parenting. So we have data that I consider both quantitative and qualitative, both over time. So in terms of quantitative, we look at how often our children change places, are they getting their annual health checks or their initial health checks in a timely way? If they're not, what are the barriers to that? And we have quite a lot of challenge over those kind of things. We also meet regionally, Sarah Jane meets with DCSs regionally, I meet with lead members regionally and we have a whole Excel spreadsheet that is shared where we look at how our data about our children in care cohort compares. But the other data that is really important is the conversations that we have with Sam and we meet in the meetings, but we also meet for coffee from time to time and my attitude has been, tell me, tell me what's not feeling right, tell me what's not working, tell me what foster carers are telling you isn't right, because in terms of recruiting foster carers, that's important, but actually we want to retain them, we want to make sure that they know how much we value them and we talk a lot about making sure that everybody sees them as professional foster carers, because it's not just being a parent, it's so much more. One of the things that I've learnt that I had no idea was the expectations on a foster family that at any time someone can sort of knock on their door and say, let's have a conversation, can I come into your house? And I don't know how you would feel about that, but I know from my point of view, my first thought would be, oh crikey, have I hoovered or whatever? So it's so much more than just being a parent, but I don't know if you want to add any more?
I'd love to, thank you. So foster care is one of the most rewarding experiences you can ever have. However, you've highlighted there are national challenges. Those national challenges are present in Suffolk as well, but we in this room have the power to change it. If no foster carers had resigned over the last five years, we would have four hundred and twenty-one mainstream carers now, instead of two hundred and seventy-odd. So I've been in position as Chair for the last two years and I regularly have foster carers come and speak to me. We've had over a hundred and eighty issues raised with us, Suffolk Foster Care Association, over the last two years. Only until the new Director of Services has taken over and councillor Bobby Bennett has been in place, have we felt that we are really being listened to and change is happening, but much more is required. Foster carers are the best recruiters of foster carers and to do that, we need to have good experiences ourselves. And when we don't, it's difficult for us, even though we wouldn't resign, it's difficult for us to say to our friends and family, come and be a foster carer, it's fantastic, and there are some really fundamental things that need to be improved. So I've done, councillor Bennett and Sarah Jane Smithmore were very kindly inviting me to do a presentation to the Corporate Parenting Board earlier this year, which was really well received. And one of the key messages there was about these adverse fostering experiences, but also staying put. So the government have this initiative where the former foster child can remain with the foster carer until they're twenty-one under staying put. How it was being implemented in Suffolk was that, in reality, the support for the foster carer would be withdrawn substantially once the child reached nineteen, because apparently the child is then independent, you're just providing a B and B service, that's so far from the truth. So the service have listened, there is now a new staying put policy in place where foster carers are properly supported to hold on to those young people and keep them, they've been part of their family for all of these years. But when it comes down to it, if your income is reduced by seventy-five percent overnight because you're doing staying put and the child's reached nineteen, you've still got the same bills to pay, still got the same mortgage to pay, that was wrong. And the service have listened and that has changed. And only this week I received a message from a foster carer to say that their young man, who has good been staying put, would have been thinking of leaving education to look for work and home, because he's nineteen and they wouldn't be able to afford to have him carry on living in their home. He's now enrolled in West Suffolk College University for three-year BA honours degree. So this is the kind of impact, if we are listened to as foster carers, we're advocating for the children, young people in our care, this is the impact it can have to completely change a child's trajectory. So back in February, we did a survey and ninety-three percent of the carers who responded, there were seventy carers who responded, said that they were unhappy with elements within Suffolk and things needed to improve. So I would just really urge that, we used to have a recruitment and retention board, which foster carers participated on, Suffolk Foster Care Association participated on, that was disbanded last year, I've been asking every month for that to be reinstated. That needs to be reinstated because foster carers' voices must be heard, we are the best recruiters of foster carers. We've also got ideas about how to recruit foster carers and how things can be framed to encourage foster carers to come across Suffolk. There's also big improvements required in the allegations arena. So as a foster carer, I describe it as you are parenting in a goldfish bowl. You are at the centre and everybody else in the team around the child is looking in, some might have different perceptions to you, some might have the wrong impression of a situation, that can then result in an allegation, which may result in a child being removed. So there have been issues over the last few years where, on balance, I would say, children have been removed, they didn't need to be from fostering families. There's other situations where fostering families have been crying out for support and it hasn't been forthcoming until crisis point is reached and then it's too late and again, the child has to move on, these things shouldn't be happening. We need to keep the children at the centre of everything we do and we need to make sure that we support the families, the kinship foster carers, the mainstream foster carers, that support must be there to keep the children in place. The worst thing that happens is children get moved on, emotional trauma is caused, they've already had emotional trauma, another trauma before they've come into care, we must not be adding to it. And in terms of activity versus impact, that's a really powerful observation. What I will say is that since Sarah Jane Smithmore has been in place, I've been invited to participate and SFCA have been invited to participate in so many boards. So we obviously afford to have the place on the Corporate Parenting Board, I now sit on the Strengthening Services Board, the Virtual Schools Board and that is absolutely crucial because there's all these fantastic people working within Suffolk, really fantastic practitioners, professionals and they're doing lots of activity, but sometimes it's not being joined up. And if the voice of the foster carers are heard, it could transform the outcome for the young people. So at the last Strengthening Services Board, I've highlighted an issue concerning education and the schools are doing fantastic work, the inclusion team are doing fantastic work, there's lots of good things going on, but they're falling at the last hurdle and the impact isn't being felt by the child that that impact is supposed to support. So following the Strengthening Services Board, a task and finish group is being set up, which I've been invited to participate on with other foster carers. So the fact that these things are now happening is fantastic, it's a credit to the Director of Children's Services and councillor Bobby Bennett that these things are happening, but it must filter down at all levels and understand that we want to work and all of us want to work to have the best outcomes for the children, if our voices aren't being heard, then the best outcomes won't be achieved, foster carers won't be recruited, foster carers won't be retained. So I think I've said my piece now, thank you.
Okay, thank you Chair, I certainly don't want to come across as combative. I think the evidence that you've just provided about outcomes, the experiential outcomes that you're experiencing are entirely valid. the experiential outcomes that you're experiencing are entirely valid. The starting point for my question was the data presented to us as councillors on the scrutiny committee. It isn't to challenge the fact that you're not having an impact because, you know, there's lots of different sorts of data. But when we receive papers, that narrative doesn't come through. But to see trends over time, looking at certain metrics, it would be most helpful. Chair, I'm not going to labour the point. We'll come back to it perhaps when we come to recommendations. I do not want you to interpret me as being hostile regarding challenging whether any outcomes are happening. Certainly, you're working hard and that is happening. It's just in terms of scrutiny, I think we need better metrics to see progress over time. Chair, I do have other questions, but I'm willing to give way to other members. Thank you.
Well, I believe councillor Spicer's next.
Thank you. So the main thing I wanted to do was to look at Flora, Sam and Sarah and say, I want to hear your voices. And so Bobby got there first, asking Sam. But can I just put to you on notice, I hope we're going to hear from all of you and a lot, not just answering questions, but telling us what you think we should be hearing? So that is really important. Colleagues, I don't really like the scrutiny committee, as I always tell you. But we've had some pretty uncomfortable subjects around, like special school transport, send services, school attainment, where it's really important as councillors that we get inside those issues and ask questions. This all feels a bit different for two reasons, because we're actually hearing about a service which we've got a lot of confidence in already. So we've got to dig. I do really want to praise those that organised our session last week. I came out of good manners to spend a morning and a, what was it? A morning with adoption and afternoon on fostering or was it the other way around? Because I've sat on permanence panels and adoption panels in the past and thought I knew everything. I didn't. And I had masses of questions then, and I'm really sorry, we all did. It was only three or four of us. But can I thank both of you who organised all of that? So how do we make today really of value, not to our scrutiny, not to the officers, not even to our special guests, but to the children who were in our care? And we've got to think around very carefully if there's things that we can talk about this morning, recommend to the director to take away and that really would make a difference. Before I forget, in case I don't get a chance to slip it in, congratulations that we've got a performance report, which isn't yet published, given to us. I asked for the performance data for quarter one. I was told I couldn't have it till next week. You've all got it in here today, so that's well done. Do I perhaps, thank you, Helen, did you get it? Well done. Well done. So I think one question that immediately, lots of questions arose from what Sam said. But I think we do want to hear about, a bit more about, you referred to the retention board. I hate that word board, by the way. Sometimes something like a working group or a task and finish groups and things can be more effective. So that's one question I think we better have an answer from officers. But chairman, through you, could we ask Sarah and Flora to tell us a bit more? Because I'm sure they've made a real effort to come probably a long way today. And then I hope before we wrap up, all three of you will help us make recommendations because we need to hear from you, some of it, other than the obvious problem of more money, more money, more money. It isn't just more money, it's what we do with the money that we've got. Would that be all right, Chair, if we asked Flora and Sarah to tell us a bit more?
Yes, we certainly consider these things as recommendations towards the end of the programme. We'll listen.
I ask Sarah and Flora to talk to us the way that Sam did. Please.
Naturally, Flora, if you wish to comment.
Hi, yes. So I, I'll run you through my experience, shall I, of adoption and our sort of timeline. So my partner and I first applied to be adopters in January of 2022. And our children were placed with us exactly 12 months later to the day. So that kind of gives you a timeline of that sort of assessment and matching and placement process. The stage one and stage two processes were really, a really positive experience for us. At the time, my partner was working from home in Suffolk and I was working full-time as a senior leader in a school in London. So, and during quite a period of transition in the school I was working in. And one of the things that I was really impressed by was how willing the team were to be flexible, to allow me to do some things virtually, to do things during the school holidays. And the team really worked to help me with that through stage one and stage two and put a lot of the stuff into the summer holidays, which was brilliant. The process itself was useful because it, I mean, obviously it got us approved to the adopters stage, but it also opened our eyes. It made us consider what the complexities of adoption were. I don't think, as I look back now, I don't think you can ever really fully understand quite how complex it is until you're living it. And I think that's an ongoing conversation I have with numerous friends who are traditional families with birth children, that on the outside we might look like a normal family and we are in many ways. But there are underlying complexities that mean that our lives are slightly different and slightly more complex. But they did open our eyes and the different training that we were offered definitely helped with that. We did the prep training in the July and that was at the time, I think it's now fully in person, at the time it was partly online and partly in person. And that was really helpful in terms of, I think for us as a couple, it was really helpful in terms of opening conversations about what this really meant. Were we really ready for this? Was this really what we wanted? But probably more importantly, it also gave us the starting point of having a network of other adopters. And I think I'll go on to talk about that a bit more. But I think that has been absolutely critical for us and for our children is having that network around us. We were, during stage two, for us, when matching happened, we had a session which was to look at the profiles of children who were looking for families. And our social worker brought some profiles along and one particular profile just leapt out of us and we were like, hmm, okay. Literally the next morning, I had a phone call saying, I've just put your name forward to their family finding social worker and we think this could be a match. And it was. Our children were with a different local authority. And I have to say, in terms of our experience of working with both local authorities, Suffolk is incredibly positive compared to where our children came from, which is also part of Adopt East. And we still have ongoing challenges in managing that because we're still in that stage of needing post-adoption support. And it can be incredibly frustrating when you're living in Suffolk and you're hearing about what other Suffolk families are doing and we don't have the same access to some of those same things because our children were placed through a different local authority. Through that sort of initial matching process and then going through to panel, again, we got a lot of support. Our experience of panel was very positive. And during the introductions phase, when the children were placed with us, that was all really positive as well. We had our children placed with us at the end of January and it took up until the 7th of February of the following year to get our adoption order through because birth parents contested at every possible opportunity. And as I'm sure you can appreciate, that was quite stressful and quite difficult to sort of manage the emotional turmoil of that. But our social worker was incredibly supportive of us during that time and as was the children's social worker as well, who came from Southend, which was their placing authority. The children came to us and, as I say, and that has all, you know, presented us with different challenges. I think where, where I think many families probably find it more difficult is once you get that adoption order, you go through, you have your celebration hearing and then suddenly you're on your own. You're not really on your own, but it does feel a bit like you're on your own. And I think also for us, that was quite a slow, slow process because it was over a year until we actually got our order. For some families, it can be much faster and so they don't get that support in those early months for quite the same amount of time that we did. I am currently working for Adopt East, running an Adopters Together community hub as a hub carer. And so that gives me a different type of insight into some of the challenges that some of the other adopters within this area have. And so some of the experiences that I will mention are theirs, not mine. But I think the post-adoption support element is where the challenges tend to be as an adopter. I feel very privileged that because I've got a background in education, because I'm older than some people and because I'm relatively confident when it comes to speaking, I've been able to advocate for our children, but it is hard work advocating for our children. And sometimes it feels like a full-time job in itself, doing that to get the different things that they need. And some of the families that I see are less well-placed to do that. And I think that's particularly true for some of our amazing single adopters. And I think to be a solo adopter is an incredible thing to do and they are doing amazing jobs. But I think when they're having to work full-time and then parent on their own, I think for them in particular, I'm finding that those are the people who I come across who really do need additional support when it comes to that advocacy stage, particularly when it comes to education. I think my experience and the experience of other people who I've come across, whose children are in sort of preschool and nursery settings or with childminders, feel much better supported. And then you suddenly get thrown into the maelstrom of school. And I think this is true for all parents, not just adoptive parents, but schools are not as in touch with parents as they are when you're in a preschool setting. And when you're having to explain to staff what trauma means frequently in schools, what that looks like, how your child might present, why a child going into school and masking might be problematic, some of those kind of conversations can be really exhausting as a parent. And I think that is, from my perspective, the area that I would really love to see changing in Suffolk is that the conversation between adoption and the sort of, and I think that would apply to kinship and foster carers and everyone, that particularly that training around trauma for schools would have such a profound impact if our teachers were better informed. And I say this as someone who's worked for 25 years in schools. I had no idea what trauma really meant until I became a parent to children who have experienced significant trauma. And I'm learning all the time. And I make it my business to spend time talking to staff in school. I make it my business to talk to our scout leaders where my children go, to volunteers who work with our children, to explain that these are the reasons why sometimes my children behave in what might appear to be disruptive or peculiar ways. Some of it is just because they're children, don't get me wrong, but some of it is because they have this more complex profile. And I think the more we can talk about that and the more, the more people have an understanding of that, the easier it will become for everyone to be able to support them. And then the second thing is around keeping in touch and contact. And again, this is coming much more from the perspective of some of the families who I've got in my hub carers group at the moment, that there has been a really positive move forwards recently to encourage families to, or in fact, in adoption orders, it is, it seems more frequently being an expectation that there will be direct contact as part of the placement order. And I'm all for that and I celebrate that very much because I know how powerful it is for my own children that they have direct contact regularly with their siblings. And it is so critical for them and for their own sense of self and for their connection to who they were, especially because our eldest was five when he was placed with us. So they've got very vivid memories of living together as a family. But for some adopters, it's really confronting and really challenging. And I think that's an area where there perhaps isn't as much support and perhaps, I think perhaps it's because we're in the early days of how that's going to look as well. But I think that's an area that would probably benefit from deeper conversations and thinking about how we can really support families to make direct contact with birth parents. A really positive and successful experience. I think I've probably said enough for now.
I say thank you for that. I saw a lot of notes being taken in other places.
Hello. On the 16th of September last year, my life changed forever. My experiences at the beginning and dealing with social services, when I look back on it now, was desperate. I was in a desperate situation. Desperate situation. And I didn't get the support, we didn't get the support that we needed then. But it's not until you look back and you get the bigger picture. The amount of time that it took for people to come back to me, I felt like I was fobbed off. Things will change. Give it a week, give it a week. It nearly cost me my marriage. It has definitely cost me my family. And I know that there are so many more kinship families out there that are going through exactly the same thing as what we did. It took until January to be passed over to the kinship team, when I could then start breathing again. I lost my family, I lost my self-worth, I lost my job. My life changed as every kinship family goes through, as every foster parent goes through. And we felt that we weren't being listened to until we got passed over to the kinship team. It felt like our concerns were being brushed under the carpet. I would be reporting constantly and that then in turn had repercussions with my family. I not only was sitting and looking and trying to do the very best for me. I was in the middle of social services. I was in the middle of my husband and trying to keep everything running, keep the house going. And of course, I then didn't have a job, so my income went completely overnight. Now, we didn't have savings, did we? Were we comfortable? Yes, when I was working. But overnight that changed. And it changed for one reason, and this is a child of three years old, who has no voice other than the one that is sitting here now. He struggles on a daily basis with different things. Contact was a major issue. We tried to get it sorted out because I kept pleading and begging for it to go to a contact centre because of the amount of issues that there were with, around contact. And I know there's many kinship families are like this. And that process needs to be quickened up. It really does need to be quickened up. Because it wasn't until the February that he started going to a contact centre. This is four months of his life, four, five months of him being told that adults are making his choices and decisions for him and we think we know the best. And actually, he was screaming and he was telling us that he knows best. He doesn't need this, he doesn't want this. And the only person that was listening in that room was because we were fighting to get things moving quicker. Didn't go to court until March. He came to us on the 16th of September, the worst day of my life because I was the one that made that call. And nobody, until you're going through this situation, until you have everybody against you, you'll never understand what it costs you. You'll never understand the emotion that you go through. And this is for all families. I hear the desperation in all the training and all the online services and you hear the same stories being said over and over and over again. The communication is a big issue. You know, if I got onto the social You know, if I got onto the social worker and I didn't hear within three days, I'm thinking, okay, unforgotten. They think it's okay. We've got a big, you know, portfolio of family that we are dealing with here. You're not the only one. I understand that. But to me, I'm important, my child is important. And all I wanted, all we needed is a phone call to say, we haven't heard yet, but we're chasing it up. That is good enough. That communication gets lost. It gets lost when you're passed from pillar to post. It gets lost in all the red tape. All we want is communication because at the end of the day, we live in this on a daily basis. We live in this life. We're doing the best we can for our, our, and the time it takes to get things in place. I was in a coffee morning yesterday and the people there were saying they're taking two years to be able to get the specialist beds because they're, they're going from one place to another and the communication isn't there. And that is what we're asking for. Please just get back to us. Please acknowledge our phone call. Please acknowledge our emails. Our desperation in every single call that we make because there is reasons behind it. Our families, whether it be kinship, fostering, mainstream, whether it's adoptives, we just need somebody to listen and that to be actioned and that to be followed up. When we don't see that, we pull back, we feel like we're not being listened to. And the only people that that affect is our children. We're adults, you know, we can brush things off, we can get up and fight another day, but our children can't, so we're doing it for them. And all we ask is for you to come back to us, to give us some answers, whether it's a yes, a no, a maybe. We just need you all to listen to us and just to say, okay, we understand what you're going through, the support is going to be there. I'm telling you that if I haven't got back to you in two days, give me a call and I will respond. And then you come back to us. The speed in which things happen, we were under a family arrangement order from the September and it wasn't changed until the March. That's not good enough. I was not passed over to the kinship team and started my initial assessment until the January. That's not good enough. I had to take on the responsibility of moving my, another because they released him to, that nursery closed down for good reasons, very good reasons. We had so many things going on at home at the same time as well, within my own family. And the fighting never stopped. I never stopped calling, I never stopped reporting, I never stopped calling, asking for someone to get back to me. And it took sometimes a week for somebody to come back to me. That's, that's not good enough. So these processes need to be sped up. It's really difficult. I understand that there's red tape and there's bureaucracy and there's certain ways that need to be done. But when a kinship family is telling you that contact isn't going right and that I am desperate and I'm going to walk away and I'm not the right person to look after, then that's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Carolyn and Bobby want to speak, so which way around would you like to do it?
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to thank you both for, for sharing your stories. And, and I think the thing that I have been learning is that when you consider being a foster carer, when you consider being an adoption carer, there's a little bit of lead-up to that. You've got time to understand, to consider it more. As a kinship carer, many of the people that I've spoken to, it, sometimes it's come out of the blue and you've got very, very little time to sort of understand the undertaking that you're going to do. And I've got so much time for all of our, all of our carers, but in particular kinship carers. I hope what this demonstrates is, is you're seeing in front of you a service that aren't afraid to invite the difficult comments. You know, it would have been very easy not to ask people who are brave enough to share their stories with you. And we're doing that because we want to challenge ourselves. We want to, to take ourselves that we know is a baseline good and see where we can do better. It's hard to hear, as I'm sure it's hard to experience, but I really appreciate you sharing this with us.
I was going to say, Bobby, councillor Bennett, that I'm not certain who was braver, Sarah telling her story or those that invited her to come and tell, tell your story. If I may, Carolyn, would you wish to say something?
Thank you, thank you both so much. I mean, I've spent some time with Sarah, so I know her journey and it has absolutely been a very intense one, hasn't it? And you're doing a marvellous job now. One of the things that Sarah was saying before we went live, if you like, is that the support that she's had from, can I name the social worker? Hannah in the kinship team? In the kinship team, Hannah has been really, really positive. And I think a real turning point for you is when you were allocated a social worker from the kinship team and then felt advocated for and heard. And I think one of the things that I've taken from today is actually what perhaps we as a service need to get better at doing is making sure that we're linking in with our colleagues from other parts of social care much more closer and then more knitted together. And I think what you'd found is that the childcare social worker, perhaps there were some vulnerabilities there and you weren't always heard. And I was that childcare social worker, so I totally understand the journey that they're on as the, as the social worker to the child. But definitely from today, I think one of the things that I'm going to think about with my kinship team is how do we knit better with those children in care social workers, child in need social workers? And we're also looking at how can we kind of co-produce more with our kinship foster carers and our adopters so that your voices are heard, but what you need to happen is really implemented and you feel really part of that? So we're looking at setting up a forum. I mean, I won't harp on Mr. Chairman like I did the other day or you'll be telling me to, to stop talking. But we've got lots of ideas and lots of things that we're really, are really kind of passionate and keen to implement. And it's the likes of Sarah and Flora that we really want on board because they'll help with our direction of travel. And I think as an adoption and a kinship service, we know ourselves really well. We know our strengths, we know our vulnerabilities. And I think, you know, hearing from both of you today has been really helpful because it's kind of echoed what we know anyway. And it's just given me, I've scribbled some notes, as I think you noticed earlier, some ideas and some things that we can kind of get going with. But yeah, huge thanks, Sarah, and huge thanks, Flora, for sharing your journeys. And I agree, councillor Spicer, it's very brave of you to come here and expose yourself like that. So thank you.
Thank you. I believe Fiona wants to say something.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And thank you, everybody. I'm just echoing the thanks of everybody around the room, actually. So there was something you said there, Caroline, that really resonated for me. And clearly, Sarah, I was with you yesterday in the meeting. And the important bit that we do need to do is make sure we have every opportunity to hear this voice from all our carers of either adopters or mainstream carers or our connected persons, kinship carers. But what resonated with me, Caroline, was the need for us in our service alongside our carers to look upwards and outwards across our system. Because in fostering or in kinship or in adoption, we won't have the answers to everything. But there's parts of our whole system approach, if you like, that will do. And I was thinking, straight to therapeutic thinking approach is in Suffolk when you were talking, Flora, absolutely. I was thinking about the recruitment and retention board that we have talked about, Sam. And we are about to walk into a collaborative review with our Foster Care Association and other carers about and around our support offer aimed at our retention, well, to improve our retention activity and really a root and branch review from the beginning to the end of what support we have within our whole system to offer our community. And I think it's really important because we have our virtual schools who work very closely with our children in care, clearly. But we also have health colleagues, we also have send colleagues. And we need to really wrap around from right across. It's not just for fostering services and fostering social workers, kinship social workers, adoption social workers to respond to this. And I'm keen that we complete that activity and then we look at our recruitment and retention board. Because councillor Spicer, remember, I'm the same as you, I think we have a lot of boards, don't we? And it's the task and finish groups to find the impact, to secure that impact and embed the impact that is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that Sam Brown wants to say something before we move on to the next question.
Thank you. I was just, some observations really. We are creating artificial silos still. So all of the children we're talking about, whether they are adopted with mainstream foster carers, with kinship foster carers, they have all suffered trauma. So trying to subdivide and listen to voices in different areas and all go off and do different things is not the most effective way of dealing with the issue. So Sarah has very kindly agreed she's going to join Suffolk Foster Care Association. This is the association that represents all foster carers within Suffolk. And we can advocate because education affects the world. So it's really important that clarity is there so we can all work together effectively for the children, regardless of what setting they're in, residential homes as well. So we advocate for every, it's for every child in care, Suffolk foster carers, it's for every foster carer in Suffolk mainstream or kinship. And I just want to make point, we need to be more ambitious with the children we have in care as well. So too often, foster carers are reporting that it's almost like children are being siloed down the route of, right, we need to show you how you can get a council house, we need to show you how to claim benefits. We need to be more aspirational, open the world to them, talk to them about workplace pensions, talk to them about apprenticeships. We're getting better, but we need to be better. And can we also, it'd be really helpful if we, it's good to know what our colleagues in other counties are doing. It's good to know what's happening nationally, but if we're always benchmarking ourselves and saying, oh, well, we're doing better than them over there, that kind of puts an artificial limit on what maybe we could do. Let's think about what we really need to do and how we can most effectively use the resources that we've got to give the best outcomes.
Thank you very much. Sarah Jean, you wish to say something on this?
Thank you, Chair. And just, you know, Sam and I have had lots of conversations. I wholeheartedly agree, as you know. And it was just great to listen to Sam and to Flora and to Sarah. And thank you from me also for, for sharing your stories. I think, you know, Sam said earlier about parenting in a goldfish bowl. That's absolutely what it is. And I think for, for all of our colleagues who've joined us here today, and that's where the role of the children's social worker and the fostering social worker are just so very important. But there is a, there is a cultural piece that we need to work on as well to, and I, I use the words and I use them intentionally because it's the right words, that we need to walk alongside each other. But it doesn't always feel like that. That's fair, isn't it? It doesn't always feel like that. And I think, and Sam, you talked about allegations and it's something that, you know, we talk a lot to our foster carers about. You know, children who are traumatised are, they can, it can take years, it can take years. Just as Flora is helping us to, to understand, it can take years to settle and to feel comfortable and to trust. It is, trust is a big part of that. And we, we support our foster carers to think about, children might say things that aren't accurate, but also we need to be very aware that, you know, people who, who want to harm children will go to where children are. So I, to be a foster carer is, gosh, it's one of the hardest things ever because of the, and to be an adopter and to be a kinship carer, the amount of regulation that's involved in that. I will never make any apology for that regulation because it's right and we all know that. But actually, the role of the social worker is to make sure if things happen, because they might happen, that somebody stays alongside our foster carer and our families and talks to them about what's happening. That communication bit is just so key because as long as there's honest and upfront communication, it doesn't make the situation any easier, but at least you know that you've got somebody who's walking alongside you. And there are social workers for the children, there are social workers for the foster carers. There's more we need to do on that cultural piece about how we stay alongside in, in difficult times. And I'm listening intently because I'm the director of Children and Young People's Services, which brings in early help, social care and schools. And councillor Bennett and councillor Reed and I have that responsibility. So that silo bit you talk about, Sam, you're absolutely right. But most of those services sit right in, in my arms really. So this is the opportunity to get this so much better. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I believe the next questioner is councillor Peter Byatt is next, I believe.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for all the contributions this morning. Sort of follows on from what councillor Mason was saying. In terms of, excuse me, page 53, we have a snapshot of things. I just wanted to say I was pleased to see from this, I'm assuming this is near enough up to date, we haven't got any out-of-county placements for foster carers, that's reassuring in terms of keeping things within the county. I just made a few odd notes and I do apologize if they come over a bit random, but it's probably an age thing. I think this was discussed on Monday and I'm sorry, Chair, I couldn't be at the pre-meet, but there was some discussion about, well, I would say turbulence in other words. What's a percentage of our children that we are, we are looking after are not in permanent fostering? In other words, if they move from foster carer to foster carer. As a segue to that, I noticed we've got this emergency foster care hub going on. Now, is that just going to be for emergencies where a child needs placing, not permanently, but if something has gone wrong with the current foster carer? Or whether it's a child who's popped up, the system has thrown up a child who needs fostering urgently? Press on with this. Yeah, I noticed there was a comment on page 42 and I think this may be something we might want to consider with respect to as a recommendation. Seventy-eight percent of foster carers basically say that they don't think the financial rewards are adequate for what they're doing. So whether we are in a position to press for that with central government? Because it's absolutely vital that we do make sure that they are remunerated. I think you spoke about silos and I think that, I think, you know, it's something we still need to break down to make sure. I mean, Sarah, you, you mentioned this about it's within your brief, but there are things within there which the spider's web of things that you've got, it's what you need to know, what needs to feed into you. And I'm really pleased to hear that that is well in hand in terms of talking about that. The voice of the children themselves, that, you know, we've got representatives here of foster carers and to make sure that through them, those children have that voice. It was good to hear that we're extending beyond 19. I think we had a conversation at the last meeting or the one before about our corporate parenting rights when these children do go beyond 18. And in fact, we talked about how far down the line do we consider them our children? So that's, that's really good to see. I think it was the, coming back to the thing about children being at risk and stability and making sure that those foster carers have got that, that ability to promise. And also in terms of advocating out there, my wife, as I mentioned earlier, is a county employee and she says, you know, they get regular messages as county employees, have you considered adopting? So how far and wide can we spread the good news about being an adopter? You know, great that we're doing it with our own people, district councils, and also taking good news stories. And the fact is that without the fostering service, we would have a lot more young people at risk and also in terms of their own futures, their own mental health. But I think, you know, the picture that's being portrayed this morning, you know, congratulations to you and Andrew and Bobby for, you know, making sure that this team is effective. And I think all we, you know, whatever we can do to boost up what you're doing, particularly in recruitment. And I think, you know, you noted that some, some of your adopt, sorry, your carers, getting a bit long in the tooth. And you, you need that continuity. But if you, you know, sharing good news stories, getting the media involved and saying, look, this is what would happen. You know, you wouldn't want to take a child, an example of a child who's not been able to be fostered or, or lost to the system. But is there a way of saying, of saying what you're doing, take the positive aspects of, that sounds saving, that sounds awfully patronising, but making sure that they don't fall through the net, that we've got that fantastic net of the fostering service, alongside all the other things with social services and so on, and all working together. But again, you know, thank you very much and congratulations on the hard work you're doing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll come in to start with, and I'd like to ask Fiona to talk about some of the things that you raised, particularly about emergency foster care, because I think there are many reasons why we might need to use an emergency foster care, but you might be able to add some colour to that or possibly Glen. I just wanted to talk a little bit about your comment about out of county, and this is a question that came up at Cabinet. And I understand why we talk about it, and I understand that we look at it, and I just want to reiterate that it's got to be what's best for the child. Now, we know that the majority of our children are cared for within Suffolk, and we know some of them are just over the border within two Norfolk, Essex, Cambridge, depending on their family networks. But I've also got in mind a kinship family that I met on the walk that we did a few months ago, and they didn't have one of our children in care, they were looking after a member of their extended family from a totally different part of the country, because that's what was right for that child. But they'd come to us and said, we're kinship carers, we have this child, can we join your family, be part of your community? And of course, we said yes. So I understand why we talk about county placements, but I think it's also really important that we keep at that forefront, is it right for that child to stay within the county? And it's got to ultimately be what, you know, the placement, the family, the home that's right for that young child or young person. And there was an awful lot of other questions in there about, but I think emergency foster care was one.
Thank you, councillor Bennett. So there are a number of reasons why children will, coming into care specifically, will require emergency carers potentially to support them for a very short space of time. We currently have, I'm looking over at Sarah because we were just on the cusp a little while ago, we currently have four foster families who offer emergency care. And over, well, since April the first, we've had 19 children within those homes at various times. So children coming into care in emergency, that could be because of the harm or abuse they are suffering at home and those decisions that have to be made to safeguard them. Or it could be for a shorter period of time sometimes because there's an emergency within the immediate family, so a parent or a carer has taken unwell and we need to look after them for a very short period if there's nobody else in their family to look after them. There are times where we have really struggled to find a urgent home for a child for whatever reason, and we have approached our emergency carers to provide that for a short period of time whilst we look for a longer term home for them. Now, our emergency carer hub is a pilot project, it is showing impact, and we are keen to undertake our evaluation earlier because we feel confident that this is the right thing to do for our children. We have a dedicated supervising social worker who works alongside those carers too, because quite often these carers are a bit like our carers who are what we call pace carers. So they'll look after children who have been in the police station and required to go to court in the morning, that it is, quite often these children can come with little information, and we need to make sure that we're there to help our carers to respond to anything that might arise during the time they're caring for them. So we feel quite strongly that our emergency carer hub is showing benefit to our children. We would like to continue to support it. So Sarah and her team are busy undertaking an impact evaluation for us to go forward to our senior leadership team to request extension of the hub. Have I answered the question?
You haven't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Reader, councillor Reader.
Thank you very much, Chair. I think this scrutiny committee meeting is going to be a watershed. I think it's one that we're going to be looking back at in the next few months and we're thinking, actually, that scrutiny has changed how we are listening to people. And thank you, Sarah, Sam and Flora, because I think you can put the badge on to say that you were instrumental in that. But I also think we do need to recognise that our officers have been brave, as we've already heard from councillor Spicer. It's the first time that we, as a committee and others committees, have had such powerful voices available to us. And all the questions that all of us have had from our pre-meetings, I think are now just turned over and now we can develop what we're actually hearing. So a number of questions, if I may, out of what Sarah was saying, and also actually my first one is from what Sam was saying. Officers, why was the retention board stood down in February? That's number one. Secondly, and I'm not sure who will answer this, it could be Sarah and others, where can you have your voice heard? And when you are there, is it being listened to? I've got a couple of other questions that I'll just leave, if I may, Chair, to have those answered. I've got some other questions that I'd like to ask.
Thank you. He would like to have a...
So, thank you, councillor Reader, those incredibly hard words. I think, Glen, are you able to address the question about the recruitment retention board? And I wonder maybe if Sam, you might be able to talk to where you feel your voice is heard or could more be heard? Would that be okay?
...an ending of the retention board. I mean, we are in a, the standing down, it was a temporary measure because there are quite a lot of change and development going on at the moment, and actually having boards and too many boards with all the work that's going on. So there is not a plan that that won't be revisited and whatever, and we've had to look at how that fits with the work that we're doing with Foster East as well, and the influence of coming together with other authorities and looking at best practice across the region. So it was a temporary measure because we felt that we were asking too much of too many people to come along to things. But I don't think there's any plan that that has come to an end. So we are, as you say, councillor Reader, we're listening to what's being said to us, and certainly there isn't a plan that anything has stopped, but there is a lot of change and a lot of development going on at the moment.
Thank you. I think, please go ahead, Fiona, then we have Sarah Crane and Caroline.
Sorry, I've jumped ahead. Okay. So I offer our fostering community a monthly coffee and cake, although we don't ever seem to get to the cake. I'm not keen on cake either, but in terms of hearing, because I was really quite excited at the point, Sam said we've got ideas around recruitment activity too. And that is a forum where I absolutely want foster carers not only to come and tell me whether our challenge is and where we can celebrate together, but I want to hear their ideas as well. There is absolutely no doubt that foster carers are one of our best recruiter of more foster carers. We have many carers who really fostering is through their family, whether it's, you know, daughters, aunts, uncles. We know that foster carers reach out to their friends and family. We have, for example, a, I'm going to say refer a friend scheme. Am I correct, Sam?
I was referred and my friend got cash for me coming up.
There we go. There we go. So, you know, we can't underestimate the importance of our carers as recruiters. And to be quite frank, if our carers feel valued, if our carers feel they belong to the county council, not just the fostering services or to Children and Young People's Directorate, and we are there to support them in any way we can, they will support us and they will help with our recruitment activity as well as retention as well, but specifically with recruitment. And I can't stress enough that it is a whole council approach to this. Thank you.
If I'm completely honest, and I know other members of the committee feel the same, it felt that the things that we were saying in the recruitment and retention board or meetings, whatever we want to refer to them, people didn't want to hear what we were saying. And that felt it was the reason that it was disbanded. It's absolutely crucial that foster carers' voices are heard. As I say, we've had 180 issues raised with SFC over the last couple of years, more than that, because probably not all of them have come to the spreadsheet, but they are anonymised and themes are drawn out. And then we have monthly meetings with the service, so we do feel that our voices, we have lots of opportunity to speak, but on something as important as recruitment and retention, we feel there needs to be a separate focus on that, and it mustn't be mixed in with all the other issues that we're trying to address. The key things to help retain foster carers is to overcome the adverse fostering experiences that foster carers are facing. And foster carers face multiple adverse fostering experiences. They might range from not being paid on time, not given full information about the child, the contact centre, not picking the child up on time, or all sorts of different things. But when foster carers are in a very emotionally challenging role in the first place, and we feel that we're having to fight for everything, as adopters are and kinship carers as well, when you have that last little adverse fostering experience drop on your back, that's what breaks you. And we've had foster carers go to other agencies or just move away from fostering completely. So it's really important that there is a specific focus on recruitment and retention where the voices of foster carers are heard. And a key area that we can work on, and that would also be Lado, and listening to how the language used within the Lado arena can affect the family, but also the impact of maybe moving a child really, really quickly when perhaps they didn't need to move. You know, it has such wide ranging ramifications that emotionally affect so many different people, that can affect retention as well. But we've given some ideas, so in the corporate parenting board where I was invited to speak, so how can the foster carers, we are the local authority's foster carers for their keeping. Foster carers want to foster for the local authority because it's the right place to foster. You know, it's where the children come in, they are the corporate parents, we're all the team. We want to foster for the local authority, we don't want to foster agencies who make money out of children in care. That's the number one thing to understand. So when you've got us, make sure you listen to us and keep us. So the key things that we highlighted at the corporate in bearing the board is treat foster carers with respect and as fellow professionals. That's an ongoing, it's, the message has been heard, it is working, it's starting to filter down, but there's still quite some work to do on that. Include foster carers in meetings about the child and young person they're being, they're caring for. Too often foster carers have an exclude from education meetings or health referrals or care plan discussions, and I cannot get my head around how you can have a meeting about a child in care and not involve the people that are actually physically living with the child and having them in their home. Reduce the number of adverse fostering experiences foster carers face, listen to foster carers and act to resolve issues raised. And, you know, Sarah's also highlighted how important that is. So that really is a strong message to take away. And then also pay at least the fostering network recommended minimum allowances. So you mentioned about fees earlier. So fostering network, which is the biggest UK charity dealing with fostering, have calculated for 25-26, the minimum allowances to care for a child in care that the foster family needs is £250 per week to raise a child naught to four years old. The national minimum set by government is £187 a week. When you get to five to 10 year olds, fostering network calculates £332 a week. Suffolk and the national minimum set by government is £187 a week still. So there's huge discrepancies. And when you get to over 11 years old, fostering network calculates it should be £428 a week. The national minimum that's being paid is £249 a week. So there needs to be an understanding and acceptance that to have the best outcomes for the children and to give them the sporting opportunities, cultural opportunities, clubs, the foster carers are having to dip into their own fees that they're getting paid for their time. And foster carers' fees, you know, we need to fund our own pensions, we are self-employed. We need to fund our own pensions, we need to pay our bills, maintain the homes that the children are living in, run cars. We have to dip into what we're being paid as our fee to cover that shortfall. And I think that's it on that.
Thank you. I thought, my mistake, I thought Sarah had a hand up.
So just to answer your conversation and your questions, my voice, my child's voice was not heard until we were moved over to the kinship team. And that wasn't until the January, so for four or five months, we weren't heard, we weren't listened to, I was being fobbed off, the processes were not told to me, I wasn't informed, I had no training, nowhere to go to. I actually got told to go to Google and search.
What did it feel like when Hannah became involved and was allocated as your social worker? Like, what felt different? Like, what did we do that we need to think about holistically with our workers?
So when Hannah came in, she started listening to what our wants and needs were and listening to what was going on within the family, within what our challenges were, that we were having issues with our child, there was trauma there, where I could go, what other services I could reach out to, who I personally could speak to. Because up until then, I was doing this on my own. So until Hannah came on and then said, hold on, we have Homes for Good, we have other places where you can go to, we can get you some counselling. Now, this was suggested in a Child in Care review that was in the October, but you know what, in the March, it still hadn't happened. It wasn't until Hannah came, and she's the one, kinship gave me the voice, kinship were the ones that actually directed and helped me to say, okay, ask this of your social worker, this should be done by your social worker, your social worker should be telling you this, not me. And that is where I feel that there's the discrepancy, and that is where the different departments and different areas need to get together and discuss, rather than saying, oh, well, I'll follow that up later.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, could I come back, please? Thank you very, very much indeed for that. And I asked what I asked first, and now what I'm going to say, I hope will be leading on from it. We've heard from Sarah Jane that she's absolutely all for this combining of the different parts of the department, and I'm sure it's always been an ambition of everybody who's sat in Sarah Jane's seat to do that. Unfortunately, I think, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is this is a demand and sufficiency problem. The demands that we've heard have always been going up, and for us as an authority to be able to service all those demands is extremely difficult. I think you accept that, you're nodding and you agree. And therefore, as an authority, and please, I don't, we mustn't labour on the, you know, the cost of looking after a child, I mean, it's priceless, the work you do, and the figures, Sam, that you've quoted, you know, are only just touching the surface. Is that a part of the tension between your organisations and fostering and the authority? Because the authority has got real difficulties in meeting those budgets, and as soon as that is talked about, then that becomes a really, really difficult subject. And is that hindering going forward the things that I know councillor Bennett and everybody there really wants to do? So are there some little things that are stopping that further dialogue and effective dialogue happening?
So budget is a bit of it, yes. I can just talk for my own, I've had a really, despite everything... I can just talk for my own, I've had a really, despite everything I've said, I personally have had a really good fostering experience. And I want my peers to experience the same. And it comes down to the fantastic supervising social worker that I've got. It comes down to the support I've had from Sarah. So it's how individuals interact with each other. And maybe there needs to be more frontline and less caselows for the supervising social workers, so they can put that effort in to support the families at times of crisis, but also just generally support. So there's a bit of budget in there. And government, for the national minimum allowances, is something that's outside. You know, that's what we need to lobby collectively for that to be increased, for funding. But yeah, it is an element of funding, but it's also about how you experience the personal interactions and the language that's used sometimes.
Thank you. Can I ask Bobby?
Thank you. And I think Sarah Jane may want to come in afterwards. I mean, you're right, you know, as an organisation, finances are very much key in our mind. And on Tuesday's Cabinet, at Tuesday's Cabinet, I reported an overspend, a significant overspend of £8 million. So we always have to balance, you know, getting that care right for those children with the budget pressures that we have, and we do have huge pressures. But one of the things I think we talked about in that report on Monday is not just can a foster placement or a kinship placement be the right place for a young child or person, but actually, and we don't like talking about children and finances at the same time, it's a very uncomfortable thing to do. But to be blunt, you know, some of our high-cost placements can cost up to five times what a foster care placement can. And so it makes sense to invest in our fostering community and make them resilient and work with them to do that, it does make sense. But please don't take from anything that I've said that this is about the money, because it's got to be about what's right for the young people. And then I just wondered, Chair, if the committee might consider some recommendations when you get to, I don't want to tell you what to do, but in terms of moving quicker, appointing social workers to our kinship parents, and possibly about reinstating some sort of, I don't want to say board, but collaborative mechanism for, around recruitment and retention. But just for you to think about.
Yeah, I think we'll take them as interesting suggestions. Sarah Jane?
Thank you, Chair, completely agree with councillor Bennett. I think as well, just coming away from money, Sarah crystallised it just so well for us. So we, that walking alongside, we walk alongside families sometimes on the most difficult day. And actually, if that person stood in your house or with your family, can't confidently say to you, this is what's going to happen next, we're going to stay alongside, we're going to give you information, then we're going to make sure this other person comes in and they're going to give you information. And, you know, this is the social worker for the child, this is the social worker for you. And that's what we should be doing. And I think that's what Sarah's helped us crystallise. It's not until Hannah's come along in the kinship team that that's happened. Well, that should have happened the day that we stood in your house. So that's the bit that we need to do differently. And that's where, you're absolutely right, councillor Rita, demand, so need. We're supporting more families than we've ever done. But it's absolutely within our gift to say, this is when we need to start working with families. So as soon as we know there's a kinship arrangement, which we'll know very quickly, that's where Caroline will push in to the field social workers to say, right, I'm alongside now, me and my team, because we need to support the kinship foster carer. Because everybody has their role to play and then they have to work together. So I think that's a really useful recommendation and really helpfully, you know, given to us there by Sarah. That's a difference we can make quite quickly.
Thank you. Sorry, Fiona.
Thank you. I just wanted to stress something as well that we haven't covered. So I think there is a tension, obviously. And I think sometimes what is asked, we are unable to deliver. But the key for me, and what I've heard from our carers, is if we can't, then we need to explain why. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Spicer was next, I believe.
Yeah, I don't want, if others are waiting. I think we just need to move on soon from kinship, which we've talked about a lot. But in the report on page 35, section 84, there's a whole list of bullet points supporting kinship carers. I don't know, was Sarah Crane, you'd seen that, had you? I don't worry, I'm not going to ask you to critique it, don't worry. Can I, there's all these wretched bullet points. Could we just ask somebody then to remind us what this new kinship local offer is? And why are we setting up a kinship association forum? Is that the right, best words?
I can answer that.
There's a lot of stuff in paragraph 84, which my confidence might have been knocked a bit, listening to Sarah. But perhaps you could get us back on track.
Can I re-confident you?
Yes. Can I just slip something else in at this point, which is more of a comment, but when we get... There's a lot of difference between the word recruitment and the word retention. And if you had a board, or call it what you will, which is going to talk about retention, it's going to actually be somewhere where people come with their grumbles and complaints, which is probably the last thing that helps recruitment. Well, it's got to be fed in a different way. And I suggest putting those two words together don't necessarily make a very productive outcome when you come to review it. Anyway, Caroline's going to explain all those bullet points in paragraph 84.
Succinctly, and not in a way that's going to take up too much time, which is what I normally do. So with regards to the points on here, when you talk about our kinship forum, so a few months ago, the kinship team were part of a DFE pilot. We were only one of 11 local authorities in the UK to be part of that. So we were quite rightly very proud to be able to join that pilot. And it was looking at the new practice care guide for kinship. And one of the activities we did within that was a focus group and a survey with our kinship carers. So very much kind of, you said, we are going to do. And one of the things that came out of that was having a forum or a space just for kinship carers to have their voices heard. They obviously can join, I call it Sam's Association. Exactly. So they can be part of that. But their motivation and the background reason for being a kinship carer looks very different to our mainstream carers. As Sarah's highlighted, it can be a phone call on a Friday night, or because you've had to say, we've got concerns about the parents of a child within the family. And we may be saying, actually, this little one can't remain in mum and dad's care. Are you able to offer that care? So literally overnight, things can change. And one of the things that our kinship carers were asking us was, what can we do to give them a space so that we can co-produce more with them? And kind of tailing off from that, an idea came that actually, what can we do with our youngsters? So we'll be looking at having a forum for our young people as well, which has been helped set up by the facilitator of our CTC council. So that will be pulled together imminently. So it's about making sure that our kinship carers have a voice, but they have a voice that's heard. Like Fiona said, it's one thing to say that we're listening to you, but how do we then facilitate and action what is being heard? There may be things that we are not able to deliver. But I think Sarah's point, and as Fiona highlighted, is that we explain that and why that is. I have a really passionate, energetic and enthusiastic kinship team. They work really hard and really care about their carers and the children. And they advocate for them on a daily basis. And I had the honour in the summer of going to our kinship carer's summer party and spent the day really talking to kinship carers and the little ones. And what I overwhelmingly heard from our kinship carers was, our fostering social worker knows us, they know the child in our care, they hear us, they act on it, they advocate for us. You as the service manager, Caroline, not, won't always say yes to the requests, but if it's a no, they come back and explain why. So I think our kinship community do feel held and heard. There is always work to do. And we're really excited and keen about kind of what the next year looks like. We've got lots of development work in the pipeline. And likewise for adoption, but I imagine we'll come on to that a little bit later. Does that answer your question, or have I gone off on a big tangent?
Yes, I think it's happened. I think one of the problems we're going to have is some of what you're bringing in is an internal communication management. And it's not for us as councillors to sit and dictate to the executive director how to run her department, or anybody else. But we will want to be seeking, be getting some assurances around communications with kinship carers, but also, in fact, right across the adoption and fostering service. I fully understand, because I've been around a while, that the children concerned, whether they're on a journey towards adoption or in foster care or in a kinship situation, they need their own social worker and their own voice through that social worker. And that's difficult sometimes, must be difficult sometimes, for the family who are caught up into this complicated line of communication and trust. And we have to rely on our leadership teams like that to ensure that communication is appropriate. But the one thing is that people have, foster carers and adopted carers, have confidence. I do think we need to talk about adoption a little bit at some point, Chairman, please.
Thank you. I'd see your arms jumping up and down like a zebby. Did you just want to reply to that?
I realised I hadn't commented on the local offer, which is this all-sing and all-dancing Tiger Page, Page Tiger, which is a link that will go out to our kinship foster carers. And they click on it, and it's basically a virtual book. So it has lots of resources in there, lots of links to support. It's going to be a really useful and clever resource. We're just tweaking it at the moment, because there was a few things that we wanted added in. It's something that Leaving Care have got as well, so you may well have seen something similar within Suffolk. But that's something that will go out, and our staff will have access to it, so it can be kind of sent to anybody they're working with who they think is in that kinship space. It may be informal, there's lots of informal kinship carers out there, where grandma and grandad are looking after the grandchild, and social carers aren't involved at all, and we don't need to be. But they may need some support. And that's where the likes of the Kinship Group come in handy, because they're able to offer that support. So this will be, yeah, it will be launched, soft-launched soon. And we can make sure that you guys get a copy if you're keen to see that. So I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a question from councillor Leva.
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of my questions, especially ones just been answered by councillor Spicer, and I know the officers and Bobby and councillor Bennett over there keep beating me to the punch on a few things. I think firstly, I was just going to follow up on the kinship carers. It was just a line in paragraph 81 on page 35, where it just stated that there are more children in kinship care than in adoption or the formal care system in England. So that's obviously something that we, I think we just really need to bear that in mind. And it's great that we're being, we're showing that focus there. Although I appreciate it shouldn't be done in silos, as we're all, you know, well aware. I do sit on the Corporate Parenting Board as well, so I have spoken to Sam. So I'm very glad that what she said in that meeting back in February is now coming to this public committee today. It's really good. I was going to ask, I think you've kind of answered it a bit, Sam, what the questions I was going to ask. It was more, it was kind of, and I think Sarah Jane as well. It was about that kind of wraparound support in terms of, Fiona, it popped in the head from what Fiona said, actually. When you're talking about kind of battling, I don't know if that was your word, sorry if I've made it too aggressive. But you're kind of working again with education settings or other things around, you know, it's hard enough being a parent anyway, without the additional issues. And my question at this moment was just around that support. Say, a child in your care is a foster carer, or has, doesn't necessarily come to you with additional needs, but it becomes apparent as they grow older that that is something that needs to be, you know, they need support with. And you said about not being involved in the care plans and things. So that was quite a surprise to me, because just how that works around, if that, we need to communicate with other parts of the children's services organisation in terms of creating a educational EHCP or any other support. Like, how does that work? And what is the kind of experience for foster carers in that? And is there more that could be done to support them if it is a challenge? I think that's kind of what I'm getting at. Because I know it's hard anyway, it's a long process, I know the timeframes for any parent are tricky. But is there any additional complexities that are brought about within this area? I think that's the question.
So I think, you know, what you've said really highlights it as well. It's the lack of understanding by a lot of educational professionals about the effects of trauma and the ability of the child, because of changes in the brain that trauma can cause, for the child to learn in the same way as their peers. And I know that Suffolk are doing some really good work on this. And Fiona, remind me of the name of the... Yeah, about the actual project. Therapeutic Thinking is being made available. Virtual schools in Suffolk are really good and very responsive. So the problem we had where foster carers weren't being invited to take part in PEP meetings all of the time, that is starting to be resolved. And the board, or the task and finish group that we're setting up about educational output and improving children's outcomes. I am a very vocal person, and I will stand up and say if I don't think something is happening. I and the school agreed that EHCP was needed for my youngest person, for his transition to high school. That still hasn't happened. And this goes back almost a year now, since it first being raised. And when you have a child in care and the trauma around that as well, you know, that shouldn't be happening. But again, I'm bringing it to the board, bringing it to the right people, so hopefully, things will happen and that will not occur for other carers in the future. But it just worries me if it's happening to me. And I sit on the board for virtual schools, and I'm chair of Suffolk Foster Carers Association. There's lots of other carers it might be happening to that aren't, haven't got the ability to speak out or don't feel confident to speak out. So there are really positive things happening. We are being listened to, Suffolk Virtual Schools, the Children and Young People Services, and there are things happening. So the Strengthening Services Board has been really useful, we've got the spin-off. So the activity versus impact, as I say, it's the lack of trauma understanding. And it's also the fact that from my own experience, I have seen a child have inclusion services involved. All sorts of recommendations were made. The recommendations then passed on to the school. And it got lost in translation as to who was ultimately responsible to make sure that all of those fantastic recommendations made were actually going to be implemented. And they weren't implemented. So the task and finish group that we're setting up now will look to bring together all of those themes and threads, so that whatever activity happens, the impact is felt by the child. Because at the moment, there are some things happening for lack of communication or other reasons where the impact isn't happening. You've got all these lovely reports, you look on paper, and it says, oh, they've had an ant referral, they're having this done, they're having that done, they've got Thrive Practitioner. But the impact on the child was minimal, because nothing was being brought together.
Thank you. Bobby?
Thank you, thank you, Sam. I just wanted to come in on the back of that. And one of the diagrams Sam shares with us quite often is a picture of the child and then the number of services and authorities that they come into their life. And when you see it on a screen, and I don't think it's in here, but I might just circulate it afterwards, because it is mind-boggling. Sam's got it. It's absolutely mind-boggling. But when it comes to SEND, Special Education Inclusion, I just wanted to address that point, because we had a SEND improvement board yesterday. But the work we've been doing, particularly looking at our most vulnerable children that are also going through the SEND system, because children don't sit in one little, you know, every child is different, it has different needs and different areas. So in terms of our more vulnerable children, that includes children in care, it might include children in the youth justice system, children in need, children in child protection. We are looking at those as a cohort within our SEND process, and they are being prioritised through that. So that's a change that's happened relatively recently. But already, I think, is seeing impact, particularly for those more complex children with the additional trauma and stresses that they have.
Thank you. And then Caroline, arm shot, I'll begin.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that we have an education psychologist called Dr Jane Leighton, and she's facilitated for adopted children what's called an EPAC, so an education plan for adopted children. And what she does is she works with the schools and the adopters and kind of facilitates a meeting whereby she's helping kind of share and explain the trauma and the lived experience of adopted children, helps kind of weave that within the EPAC in terms of what needs to be done about the learning, what the school setting needs to look like around that particular child. And that's been really, really effective. I mean, I'd echo what Flora said about schools not always understanding. But we do have some really good colleagues within Suffolk who work really closely with us in the schools to make sure that our education colleagues do have a better understanding of the trauma. And we're thinking within adoption, how do we work more closely with our...
And we're thinking within adoption, how do we work more closely with our schools and help them have that better and deeper understanding? So kind of as I said earlier, lots of development work going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ash?
I just wanted to say, just on that same subject, because we're talking about the trauma and the training and stuff. I mean, I wonder whether this might be a recommendation that, obviously, we're all corporate parents, all as councils here. I mean, maybe that's something we should be receiving as well, that sort of, that training, that, you know, a bit better understanding about that. Because, you know, like we say, we are all corporate parents.
Thank you. Hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add on the sort of school side of things that one of the complexities for adopted children is that in that initial stage before you get your adoption order, you have access to a PEP and to virtual schools. And then as soon as that adoption order goes through, not only do you lose your social worker, you lose that as well. And that can make the advocacy picture really challenging. And I have, through my Atchab, I've been doing some, having some conversations with Jane Layton, who is brilliant but very stretched. And one of the things that I'm really working hard with our school, who I have to say, our schools are excellent. They are trauma-informed in practice. In reality, it's not quite what I would ideally like it to be. But I am working with the school. There are quite a number of children in our children's primary school who are in kinship care and who are adopted, probably higher than in a lot of schools. So I am currently trying to set up an informal, school-based network for those families because I really see that there's a big gap. And I had a conversation with them about implementing EPACs in the school. And I faced a lot of resistance because they're like, it's just too much work, we can't do it. And I get it, I've worked in schools, I know how heavy their workloads are. I really understand it. But as a parent of three children who present as being very outwardly, very gregarious and confident in many ways, and the sort of hidden depths of complexity that lies beneath that, it's such an important thing to be able to do. And it's exhausting to be fighting for it all the time. And so, yeah, so I just wonder if there's something we could do about particularly that relationship with schools that goes beyond that post-order stage so that... I've had, sorry, I've had to go into three teachers this week and explain my children's story to them. And it's really hard to do. I shouldn't have to do that every single start of year. And I do, and I don't like doing it, but I do it because they need it so badly. Because they need people to understand them and they need to understand why it is that they are the way they are sometimes. And it's exhausting because at home, they come home from school and it all explodes. And I know that when they're at school, they present like little angels. Because that's, you know, that's what children who have trauma do. They mask and they show their best front because it is so important to them that they are liked and that people want them to be, you know, unless one says to them, oh, they're so cute. And they are, but I don't want them to be cute. They're more than just this cuteness. And that's true for so many of our adopted children. That they're not what they present. And they need, they need to be understood in a more powerful way. Sorry.
Thank you. Are you okay? Appreciate that I had to come out. Okay.
Everything you've said, foster carers' experience as well, can I suggest that Flora is invited to join the task and finish group that we're doing on education? Because it runs across adoption as well. And you've got some really valuable information that could help us shape it.
I'd love to, yeah. Thank you.
Chair Jane?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Flora as well. That, great suggestion, because that's exactly what we need to do. There's a national conversation, I would say that because it is a national conversation. And I have the privilege of chair in Adopt East as well. So I, you know, have a wider view of this. There is definitely a role for our virtual school. And I wonder if we're sort of sweating our assets as much as we could do. So it's that bit about, you know, we have, we have the key here to unlock so much, but it's that silo sometimes that we don't think wider. So having these voices, having these opportunities to think about that, we've absolutely got to do that. There's a national conversation there, Flora, as well. But I think we need to, I'm definitely in that conversation. We need to bring everybody, yeah. No, no, absolutely. And it is, you know, it's the difference between fostering and adoption and, you know, things that are there when children are fostered are not there when they're adopted. But that doesn't mean they shouldn't be there or it doesn't mean that there shouldn't be support that leans in. So that's where we need to think is a system, a systems thinking. And we need to absolutely hear that. And we need to support our schools. Because, you know, it's just, it's, it's, you know, you know, because you come from education background, they're doing particular things, but we need to help. Maybe SENCOs and people who could take a particular interest to help upskill other people too. There are many schools who are really keen for that conversation. So I think there's opportunities we can take there. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Councilor Peter Bight, followed by Councilor Mason, followed by Jane Sheet. That is my running order at the moment.
Thank you, Chair. Just dropped a couple of notes in here. But first of all, thank you for your very passionate evidence to this committee. I think, you know, you summed it up very, very clearly. It's about communication, about, you know, I should have declared earlier, you know, retired teacher. I know what the pressures are on teachers in the classroom. And this is no excuse because to me, teachers should know. A couple of things in here, really. In terms of when we have children, you know, being either adopted or have been fostered in any way, do we automatically inform the schools? Do they automatically get an EHCP? Because I think that it may be a bit too drastic to go down that line. But also proportionally, are children who are adopted or fostered, what are the percentages of those children who end up needing an EHCP at some point? But it's early intervention. And as you say, it's important to talk to teachers, to explain to them, you know, as you say, you've had to go into school to explain that. I feel that's wrong in terms of good practice. And it's not a criticism of the fostering service or education in any way. It's just how things are. Now we've got, you know, massive ability with, straight away, you know, you can send out messages instantly to schools. Obviously, a lot of confidential stuff out there, but it needs to go in. Head teachers need to have sight of every child in their school, you know, who has the possibility, bringing, I suppose, some emotional baggage with them if they've been adopted or fostered. Doesn't mean, you know, it's something to be desperately worried about. But it's a need to know. I think it's absolutely essential that that comes out of this. So, you know, the at-risk register for children, as I say, you know, what do we consider at risk? We know domestic violence and other things like that, immediate at-risk things. Should we be considering that the fact that the child has not got, and I don't like to use this word, not got the usual family background to the majority of other children? Should that not be flagged up early to the school? I think, I feel personally, that's something I would welcome. You know, way back when I first started teaching, things were very different. You didn't know, people were very private about their arrangement. There wasn't an automatic feeling that it would affect the child's welfare in the future. So anything we can do to reinforce that ability to communicate. And your diagram, it's all about lines, who talks to who, it's cascading information. And, you know, thank you for that, it's really useful with that. I think, you know, plus the knock-on effects of mental health issues and so on further down the line, that early intervention, it's a great thing to wish for, isn't it? And I know, I appreciate the restrictions because we want these things to happen. And as Joanna says as well, sometimes financial restraints actually stop you being able to do everything you want. But thank you again for what you've said. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you. It's a, it's a complex discussion in the fact that, and colleagues will come in if I'm strained. But for our children who are our children in care, we share corporate parenting responsibility and we would always share information with the school. We, you know, that just passed the course. As soon as a child is adopted, we lose any of that parental responsibility. Quite rightly, because the adopted parents are the parents. Then it's down to parents, if they want to share that or not. And to go through that adoption process, I respect parents to decide if that's right or not. What we need to do is we need to just make sure that there is somebody, at least in the school, who's able to understand that, you know, and to be able to support in the way that's needed. So I think it's a really helpful reflection. It's how our foster carers, absolutely, it should be a process which is automatic because we're all corporate parenting a child that's different for our children once they're adopted. So it's a constant, ongoing conversation, which I'm sure Caroline behind me would be able to talk about more eloquently than I've just done. But, yeah, thank you.
So there needs to be wider understanding. But the realities are, there are over 900 children in care, spread across over 400 schools in Suffolk. So the group I've mentioned earlier, the task and finish group about improving educational outcomes, what we're going to look at, and we literally had our first meeting last week, what we're going to look at is that we need to help the schools. So have a basic framework, like a best practice guide. If you have a child who has experienced trauma, is in care, these are the areas you can go to for help and guidance. But if you have a child coming to care, immediately put them on the SEND register. Because even if they haven't got traditional special education needs such as dyslexia, they would have had probably substantially missed learning, missed learning opportunities. So put them on there. Your best practice would also then be to get immediately extra tuition put in place. Because if we don't act straight away, those children who might have only had 67% attendance, I can't remember where I plucked that figure from, but they're going to be behind their peers in a class. And that's when the children can then lose focus, become disruptive. If we give that extra tuition and right from the start, bring them up to their peers so they're not facing that disadvantage in the classroom to start with. This is what the focus group, the task and finish group is going to be looking at. And I think if Flora can join us on that and bring expertise as well from her background. Virtual schools, we know they're really proactive and they are actually chairing this, bringing in people from other parts of the local authority. But I'm really excited because I think this is what we need, a framework to help schools help the children. Because when you've got 900 children spread across 400 schools, you're not going to have particular pockets of expertise. So we need to help them to help the children.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mason?
Therapeutic treatment and children who need support from specialised services. I think I'm right in saying that some councils elsewhere are trialling, embedding CAMH into children and adolescent mental health services into teams. Is it fair to say that our therapeutic team is quite small and demand is outstretching our ability to provide that service in a timely manner? How would you characterise the kind of waiting times of the support that children are waiting for support from those specialised services?
Thank you, Councilor, for your question. And thank you, Chair. So I think Sarah will be able to talk about what therapeutic support there is for our fostering family. There are two different things here. You're talking about support to children, whereas the services here provide support to the adults, if you like. So it's the, we've already heard about, forgive me, I can't remember her name. The, thank you. Jane, who supports our adopters. And we're hearing very clearly that she's very thinly stretched. So suggesting that we could do more into that space. But tell me, Flora, if I'm wrong, but she would support the adults rather than directly work with children?
My understanding is that she's an education psychologist. So she would be able to work with, particularly assessing children. But primarily with the adults. But for example, I have put in an EHCP needs assessment for my eldest and spoke to her about that. And she said, if you directly request me, then I might be able to do his assessment for that. So in that space, then yes, she would be able to work with children.
Thank you, Flora. So that's about us thinking slightly differently about how we can use the resources that we've got. But it wouldn't be a common thing. Within our fostering service, and Sarah, you'll come in and you'll say a bit more about that. We do have a therapeutic support to our foster carers. Is it enough? That's a conversation that we definitely need to have. As to CAMH services for children, that's a separate conversation, which I think we've all talked about children's mental health and the fact that we need more support into that space in every way. But the services here are services which support the adults rather than the children, if that helps.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Perhaps it was unhelpful to blend the two things into one question. So if I try and tidy up the question just a little bit, how would you characterise then the support in terms of a time delay that our carers get from the therapeutic teams? And, you know, because again, I think somewhere in the report it was indicating that demand outstretches the ability of the service to supply it. So how would you characterise the efficiency there? And what improvements can we see?
So we do have relatively small therapeutic team within our fostering service. As Sarah Jane has said, that support is directly for the foster carer. And that's through different forms of training, foster carers to think therapeutically. And they'll be offered consultations where there might be a concern or a worry or something that needs, you know, the foster carer might need support with or holistically as a group, how do we support a child? We have weekly referral meetings and they can be, the foster carer themselves can refer, a social worker, whether that's a fostering social worker or a child social worker. So there's, it's a very busy service. And we try to meet the demand very quickly. And because we are offering consultations, we are able to kind of get in quite quickly in terms of having those initial conversations with people to think, again, holistically, how can we support that foster carer? As I say, it might be coming up with a plan of certain training or whether specific ongoing consultations need to be had in terms of one-to-one. We've got a very skilled cohort in that, in that space, in that team, with two clinical psychologists, one who sits over our connect service, who, the mental health team for children in care, part-time and also within our therapeutic team. So again, there's often that link in because we know those, some of those children are already receiving certain services from that team. And then that clinical psychologist is able to kind of assist with working in parallel, really. In that team, we've got experienced, trained social workers, but also we've got other workers in that team who, as I say, facilitate the training, the therapeutic training. But also we've got a couple of their classes, sort of family support practitioner roles. But they are working to support children. So they do do some direct work with children in foster placements. So in terms of managing that, I think we are, I think if we had more resource, obviously, we would be able to do more. But in terms of the response rate, I think we are being responsive there. We don't have long waiting lists for our families. So I think at this moment in time, that's well managed by the team. As I say, because we've got an array of services that we can offer, we are able to offer something quite quickly to those families.
So I'm sure although demand is high, you feel that the team is being responsive and supporting?
Yeah, that's my assessment of that situation. I think, as I say, the team are very enthusiastic to, you know, develop new things. And but we also have to be realistic about what we can offer in terms of those, you know, what we have in terms of resource. But I feel, you know, we effectively manage that at the moment.
Thank you very much. Jane?
Thank you, Chair. I've been very struck really by both the report and particularly by your bringing to life a special guest, some of the challenges in the system, really grateful for that. I think we've heard a lot around the experiences of adults caring for our most vulnerable children. I suppose my question is, how do we ensure the voice of the child and the young person is held and heard? And I don't think And I don't think that's for this committee. It's just seeking an assurance that there is somewhere where we capture the implications and the impact of those multiple moves that we hear about in paragraph two or three. Clearly if that is an increasing trend, that's of concern. And I wonder, Sarah Jane, you talk particularly around foster to adopt, I love foster to adopt and had some sort of experience of that externally. And I'm struck, there are just eight families in that, is there anything we can do to promote that? Because it seems to me permanence and stability and finding homes for good have got to be in the interest of these children.
This is, I could talk to you for hours about early permanence. So we're hugely passionate about foster to adopt, early permanence, because it obviously ensures the least amount of moves for the child. The risk sits with the adopters. So it's, so we are asking our adopters to take a huge risk. And we've had a number of situations over the years whereby we've had adopters who have had a child placed them on early permanence and they are foster carers during those care proceedings. And during the proceedings, my kinship team has assessed and extended a family member and it's been positive. And therefore those early permanence carers have had to reunify that child to the birth family. Obviously their wish at the end of that was to be the adopters. What's really interesting and what struck me is when I've spoken to these early permanence carers, is despite the loss, because it is a loss, they fall in love with this child and the heartache at reuniting the child to the birth family, they've all said they felt really honoured to be part of that chapter of the child's life and that they would do it again. So we hold our early permanence carers in a really tight space. We offer them an awful lot of support, an awful lot of training. The adoption social workers really understand that journey that they're going on. In the past three years, we've had 36 early permanence placements that have progressed to adoption. Suffolk is a high flyer in early permanence and I would say that sits very much because of the ethos within the team. The team are really passionate about early permanence. I'm really passionate about early permanence. And I think it's very easy if you're an adoption social worker who's formed in a connection with your adopters and they have to reunify a child home, that can really wobble social workers because they've got to hold that heartache for the adopters. But what I've really found with my team is that, yes, it's difficult and it's sad, they can hold that space, but they're very much of the view, early permanence is still absolutely right for other adopters and we still kind of continue to fly that banner, if you like. And all of our information evenings, all of our events where we're talking about adoption, we are very much talking about early permanence. And for our assessing social workers, there's an expectation that we start our assessment thinking, you could be early permanence carers. And through that assessment, it may be that we decide that's not the right way forward for those particular adopters. But we start the journey thinking, you could be EP carers, let's see how we get you there. Interestingly, we have prospective adopters that come in going, I can tell you right now, you know, I'm not doing early permanence, that's not happening. We absolutely respect that space. Fast forward two months into the assessment process and they go, just maybe tell me a little bit more, like I'm curious, we've met some early permanence carers now and actually maybe this is a possibility. So fast forward to the end of the assessment and actually the applicants are ready to go to panel and offer an early permanence placement because they've been nurtured on that journey by the assessing social worker. And it, I mean, Flora can attest to this, it ain't easy being assessed as an adopter. It is a very intense process. And I've said this before and I'll say it again, I make no apology for that. You know, you are going to be adopting the most vulnerable children with the most complicated backstory. And my goodness, we want the absolute best for these children. And therefore, you know, your journey to be adopters is going to be, we're going to ask you to jump through a number of hoops. But early permanence is something that we really, really fly the flag for in Suffolk. And if we have early permanence carers in Suffolk, but we don't have any children whose care plan would be early permanence, that's when we'd look within wider local authorities within Adopt East. So that's where the Adopt East model comes in really into its own. We work really closely with those other local authorities and gel together really well. So we kind of work collaboratively. Thank you.
Can I just add to that, that in my hub, I've got three early permanence adopters who, all of them are just coming up to the point of putting their orders. And they all would reiterate that it's been a really positive experience, but also that for some of the other adopters within the hub, they are considering early permanence because of the experience of these early permanence first second adoptions that they're considering going through in the future. So I guess a bit like you've said, foster carers recruit, foster carers, it's that adopters recruit adopters as well in the same way. So yeah.
Hey Bobby?
Yeah, I wanted to come into the point about child's voice and I'm going to answer that in two ways. So that diagram that Sam held up, all the people that's involved in child's life, one of those is something called an IRO, independent reviewing officer. And it's their role, independent of the social worker, of the foster carer, to really hear those child views, make sure that child, where age appropriate, has an understanding of their rights. And I'm sure someone much more qualified in social work can talk more about it. But, but so on a case basis, on a child's basis, that's how their voice is heard in the process. Slightly different to that is how we as a council hear a child's voice. And through our engagement hub, we have a number of forums, of groups where young people in care can come to us. They don't have to, you know, if it's not something they don't want to do, we don't force any child to give us our views, but the young people I've met are very keen to bring their views forward to us, aren't they? And with the review of the corporate parenting board going forward, we've asked them to chair and set the direction of some of those boards as well. So, you know, I've got confidence around the child's voice being heard within their care and I've got confidence that we are hearing children's voices as well.
Okay. I was thinking to say councillor Spicer's got the last question, but councillor Reader wants to go afterwards. None of this requires long answers. I, no, just to reassure Jane, we did spend a lot of time at the session last week talking about what I still call fostering to adopt, what you call it, early permanence or whatever. A couple of sort of governancy things, not necessarily to move to recommendations. I thought the section in the paper on governance, in other words, panel membership and decision making and underpinning, was actually not particularly strong, but I did ask you a lot more about it. Can I recommend councillor Bennett and Sarah Jane, that to keep an eye on, one of the things about governance is always thinking of the what if, but the importance of the panel's workings, preparations, no mention in here of the decision maker process and that sort of thing. So please, can you just keep an eye on that? And the other thing, again being a bit governancy, so you've got an action plan in here, which is not what the audit committee, it's called key priorities, page 51. I don't think the audit committee would think that was much of an action plan. Do you actually have an action plan with dates and named people and all sorts of things for delivering those priorities?
I'll pass back in a second, but the key priorities there from the fostering annual report, and that comes each year to the corporate parenting panels. So in terms of the detailed action plan to get the work done, Sarah, can you?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We've got an action plan.
Priorities in the annual report?
Yeah, there is an action plan that we're working towards. Obviously that's been taken from the annual report that was submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Just to show what the priorities are for the coming year, but there's an action plan that sits behind those priorities.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. James?
Thank you councillor Reader, thank you Chair. Councillor Spicer, I think we could take an opportunity to think, there's an adoption panel and a fostering panel, both have chairs, both chairs create a report for us and there's something that we could do to think about what we could make public in that report so that that's part of the papers. I think it's a really good challenge. Thank you.
And I've sat on both and in many ways, haven't changed a huge amount over the years. That is making massive decisions about children. I mean, it's big, it's big things for adopters and foster parents too. But that, the record of that being properly recorded as well is really, really important. The minutes, sorry, I've got my, anyway, I'm rambling. You're good though, James?
Thank you very much. Just so that we can get a balanced view, if I may, Sam and Flora, if I could ask you, obviously you have a huge amount of experience with other people within your organisations who have gone through the process, who are in the process, who are being supported by the process. Are you able to give this committee confidence that there is a large number who are getting a very good service? The reason being is people on this committee have got various experience of the service and also we've had a lot of kind of talking with officers over the last week or so in preparation for this. And I have never, ever seen one person who has not got the passion at the highest level, the determination and the will and the wish to be able to do the best they possibly can and not just harping on about demand and, and rising need. But could you please, if you're able, just give us a bit of reassurance that what is being done works when it is able to be done?
It's definitely positively moving in the right direction. But as alluded to by, you know, there are national challenges and there are the cultural challenges, but I feel confident that the senior management within Suffolk County Council now are going to overcome those. And I just would really love it if we can forget about what everyone else is doing. We know what we need to do to get the best outcomes for the children, so let's find the best way of working together to make that happen. We can't keep benchmarking against women not as bad as them. But yeah, I do feel confident going forward, but at the moment, I would say in the fostering cohort, there's still quite a bit to do, but we have got the voice now and we are being listened to and things are happening, it'll take time.
So would you agree that there's this little adage, which I've used for years and years and years, cooperation through communication, not confrontation?
Definitely.
Thank you.
I would add to that as well, that I think from an adoption perspective, that I think my experience of everything through Suffolk has been incredibly positive and I think that is also the experience for the majority of other adopters that I know. But I really liked the comment earlier about not benchmarking against other authorities because I think there is a national challenge in the arena. And I think, wouldn't it be amazing to be the best local authority in the country and to break through that glass ceiling and see if there are ways of doing things better? Because particularly in, my experience of post-adoption is not through Suffolk, so because my children haven't been post-ordered for three years yet, but there are definitely still areas to improve in that area. And as I mentioned earlier, I still think that picture around contact and how that looks is an evolving one and I think there is still work to be done there as well.
Chair, if I just could come back on that. So we've heard a lot from various meetings, there's a huge amount of national issues which bind the hands of this authority and our officers to do. No, one's nodding and one's shaking her head. So, but when we hear about kinship, every, you know, kinship is the way forward, it would appear. And, and I think we're all in agreement. I know you're keeping your head very still now, because I'm so. No. So, you know, there's a lot of legislation around that. The times that we, we've heard that once somebody wants to become a kinship, the time for officers to be able to do the work, to be able to make sure they're able to do that work is so tight and could take our officers across the other side of the county or the country. So some of those national restraints and conditions that are put on this authority make it very difficult. And through your national organisations, that helped to be able to identify those further up the food chain, which are sometimes barriers for our officers to do the work, would be very, very useful.
Can I just say something? I understand what you're saying about kinship cares, but I think our ultimate aim is to create safe, loving homes for children, whether that's through kinship, fostering or adoption. And I think ultimately it's got to be the right route for those families and child. So I wouldn't want to pit anyone above any other. But we have talked about how possibly coming into care as a kinship carer is a different route. It may, you know, it may not have been on your horizon and then all of a sudden, you know, you're there with a responsibility.
No, I'd make the point, it just seems to be nationally, this is kind of the golden thread, which may not be, but.
Councillor Reader, you're right. So if you think about, and Sam just said it, is stable homes built on love, which is now the family's first programme, which we're really pushing forward here in Suffolk. A lot of that is thinking about early help, early intervention and kinship care being, you know, the absolute, we need to support our kinship carers the best way that we possibly can. All of those things are brilliant and we're going to hold those close, but we're always going to need our fostering family and our adoptive family and residential care as well. So it's just as Bobby says, we've got to, oh councillor Bennett, sorry, we've got to, we've got to do all of those things really well. But the most important thing we've got to do is speak well of each other, good relationships and listen and enact. So I think that's, you know, that's what I would take away from every conversation that I'm in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, your head's up again?
Sorry. May I just pick up on Flora's point about that kind of post-adoption contact for children whose care plan is adoption? So we have in Suffolk a keeping in touch team and they work really closely with our adoption team, our child in care social workers and our adopters, looking at what should be that post-adoption contact for a child whose care plan is adoption. So for some children, it's absolutely right that they should have direct contact, be it with siblings or with birth parents or with grandparents. And we use a model called the safe and meaningful contact model to assess that. For some children, it's absolutely not safe and appropriate to have direct time with a birth family member and we absolutely wouldn't be recommending that. And I take Flora's point about the fact that some of the courts are recommending that and it may not be something that the social workers agree with. So our representatives in court push back on that. You know, our, our heart sits with the child and what is right for them. And if it's right for them to see birth dad twice a year, then we will absolutely fight for that. If it's not right, then we will not be supporting or recommending that. What we do find and what we have found lately, which I wanted to share with you because I think it's really interesting and really important for you to know, is we've had some adopters who've had children living with them, they've been mum and dad to them for a number of years now. This modernising adoption agenda, which Suffolk's really at the forefront of and really passionate about, because it's very much out there, we've had adopters contacting us saying, do you know what, birth mum six years ago, we know her mental health was really poor, but she writes once a year, she seems like she's in a much better place. Could you please reach out and see if we're safe for my daughter to spend some time with her? So we're now in a position whereby we've got our veteran adopters, as we think of them, those that have been doing this for a number of years. And we are facilitating time with those adopters, a birth family member and the child, because it's really helpful with that child's sense of identity. And I think what's really important is we've got adopters that, like Flora, that really understand the importance of children understanding their identity. And in the keeping in touch team, we're really helping to hold that space for our families. So I just wanted to make sure that, that kind of point was out there because Flora mentioned it earlier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's been a very largely positive and very definitely passionate review of fostering and adoption services and I thank you for your time and passion very much. At this point, I'll ask the cabinet member, if she would like to make final comments.
I think councillor Lever has got a comment.
Sorry, I didn't, well, we're done with questions, sorry, I didn't realise. I mean, I don't want to, I mean, this has been wonderful and I mean, I probably could stay here all day and keep asking questions, as I'm sure most probably other members can. I don't want to take up too much more of everyone's time, but I just, it was just really something around, I mean, I think it's been touched on earlier and it's in here somewhere, I won't be able to find it right now. But it's just kind of that, the funding, and we've talked about internal funding and the cost of it, but like kind of where we're drawing in funding from externally and where there's some worries there about some of the funds coming to an end for the support for adopters.
So you're talking about the ASG. So you're talking about the ASG SF, the Adoption Special Guardianship Support Fund, total mouthful. So the DFE have confirmed funding for the next financial year. There's been a lot of anxiety, quite rightly, with adopters and our SGO carers that it would come to an end. It has been cut from last year to this year. So this has definitely given us space and time to think about what things could look like moving forward. What we've been doing in Suffolk for the past couple of years, because we know this isn't going to last forever or it might end up just looking very different. It may be that, for example, a doctor's has given a pot of money and we have to manage that with our adopters. We just don't know what the future looks like. So we are upskilling our social workers. We're making sure that they're in a position to be able to deliver some of the interventions that we would normally go to the provider framework for and use that ASG SF money. So kind of our priority is really upskilling our practitioners and making sure that we're able to deliver a more diverse range of interventions. And that's something that's really supported by the Head of Corporate Parenting and the Assistant Director and is kind of constantly on the agenda, if you like, in supervisions because we're really mindful that we need our post-adoption families to feel held and supported and that they've got that right support in place. I don't have all the answers today of exactly what the future's going to look like. But what I can reassure you is it's very much the top of our agenda and something we're all collectively talking about. But also talking to our adopters about as well in terms of what they feel it needs to look like. And I feel like I might be putting Flora into another task and finish script. You're not going to have time to work. Does that answer your question?
That was the main one. I was just concerned, I mean, the fact that you're obviously well aware of this and you're making steps to like, you know, because I know in the past there's been, we've had other scrutiny's where there's been worries about a drop, an ending to a particular fund or particular support and it's, you know, it could have knock-on effects. I think we had an issue, like Conversation Youth Justice. One tiny last bit, and I know I've spoken to you all about this loads of times and I still just can't quite let it go. And I can never remember the term and Caroline, you will correct me what it is. But this, I think you probably never going to say when I start saying educational services...
Private fostering?
The private fostering. And this arrangement, we had the wonderful meetings with yourselves and it came up around agencies who work with parents of children who are abroad and want to send their children to education in the UK, which is wonderful.
So there are education guardianship companies who, there might be a family who say, 'I want little Johnny to study in Suffolk' and little Johnny comes over to a school in Suffolk and boards, yeah, that's...
Okay, so educational guardianship companies. Now, as I understand it, obviously they are earning money. They're being paid by these people to send their children to UK, for any UK education. Now, culture exchange, everything brilliant, I went on German exchanges, I went on French, it's wonderful, okay? Now, I understand they obviously have a host family in this country which will look after the child for duration of their form in their education. They get a fee from the educational guardianship company to do this, as foster carers do. Now, the issue, the concern I have is there is obviously statutory duty under the Private Fostering Act, I believe it's called, for the local authority to ensure that these children are, you know, not at risk, they're not vulnerable or anything. And I totally back that as well. It's really important. We know about whatever all the children are doing. My understanding however is that that is done at our cost, at our time, with no recompense from these companies which are bringing these people over. Now, have I got that correct?
You do, because it's the local authority's statutory duty to monitor those arrangements and make sure, it's a safeguarding duty essentially, to make sure those arrangements are safe. I think we have at the moment 17 private children that are privately fostered. We don't have a huge number in Suffolk. Some of those are home for Ukraine children. I think four are special education guardianship companies have brought over. It's September, so we're at that time of year. And the rest are within kind of our more traditional, if you like, private fostering arrangements. But my budget doesn't get given money from the government, if that's what you're asking about that. It becomes, it's Suffolk's statutory legal duty to ensure that these children are safe. And the teams do a really good job of it. It's a really complex area and I am absolutely not the expert in this. You'd have met Sam Lockwood, the team manager, who could tell you all the regs off the top of her head. So please don't test me on them. But we have a duty of care to these children and we deliver that and quite rightly too. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. My concern was obviously that somewhere, something isn't being funded, which maybe should be and it's taken away from other, I suppose. So yeah, okay, maybe a recommendation. Thank you very much. I will stop. Bobby?
As I was, Chair. No, I thank you. It's been a really interesting scrutiny. And I think you've heard with deep passion from Sam, Sarah, who's had to go and look after her child and Fiona. And you heard that the journey that them and their children are on can be deeply emotional, can be upsetting and where those areas of challenge can be alleviated by something we can change. I think we absolutely have to listen and do that. We're so incredibly lucky to have such strong advocates who not only are prepared to challenge us, but also prepared to work with us to bring about improvement. And you've also heard from our officers, who I know go above and beyond in the work that they do, that they're exceptional in the here and now. But also the work they do, looking at the horizon, looking how they can mitigate the challenges that are coming down the line. We're incredibly lucky to have them and we're incredibly lucky to have a team that is open to change, not afraid to change the status quo to make things better. And I think I'll end by saying that corporate parenting, in my view, is the most important thing we do as councillors. And I thank those who sit on the corporate parenting board with me. We will be doing corporate parenting training. We're already planning it for all councils. We really hope they'll take them up. But if anyone at any time wants to have a longer conversation with me, would like to come to a corporate parenting board or even, you know, join it, very happy to have that conversation. But look forward to hearing your recommendations.
Thank you very much. Before we go into recommendations, I tend to have a short break before recommendations because people are getting fidgety. But before he escapes, I just would like to wish Glenn Smith a happy retirement. Glenn Smith has been a cornerstone in the support of Suffolk's children and families. Glenn's unwavering commitment to service and social work over years has truly made a difference to many. More recently, Glenn's dedication and support to our fostering and adoption services, Suffolk's Children's Homes and his role as Head of Service for Corporate Parenting have had a profound effect. The difference Glenn has made to children, young adults, families and staff under his tenure is immeasurable. On behalf of the committee and officers, we wish you, Glenn, all the best in your new adventures and trust that you will enjoy many bike rides and well-deserved time to enjoy doing the things you love the most with the family and friends. Now, I'm not going to sing... He's a jolly good fellow, but thank you very much.
Can I, it's been nothing but a privilege and seeing so many wonderful colleagues and so many wonderful families. It's when I hear about what's happening within adoption, I hope in the next 20 years, we make more progress about support. And that position where we talk passionately in Suffolk about being corporate parents, that we recognise that every one of our children, all the children I've seen through those years, everyone is an individual and we must individualise that support for those children who've been adopted particularly. Some won't need too much support, but we do as the local authority and all local authorities need to be there. So thank you. It has been a huge privilege to work for Suffolk and I feel terribly embarrassed when these things happen. It's my privilege and nobody else's, so thank you.
I did think you were trying to escape earlier, but... Okay, we'll have a short break now until quarter two. Now, I hope you will come back and stay for the recommendations. I think if we have a short break, we can concentrate on the better. Thank you. Are we all nearly ready? Peter Butt?
Thank you. Following on from what, excuse me, what Joanna said, these key priorities on page 51. Personally, I think these, we should be endorsing all of these in some way, but perhaps just asking for a little more detail in terms of how they might pan out in terms of, we've got some dates in here already, but in endorsing what you're trying to do, because every one of these, I think, is a key thing that we need to be supporting. But also on top of that, I think we've all spoken this morning, James talked about this as well, about communications outside the Adopted and Fostering Service to the other agents. I know you already do it, but you know, we heard about the problem with schools and things, making sure that they do know that if there's any way we can improve that communication with schools when they're taking on or when they're looking after foster children and adopted children, is that a possibility as well? But I mean, maybe these are too many recommendations, but I just thought, I read them through and I thought, this is what we've been talking about this morning, all the things you want to do, all the things you want to do to continue providing a good service. Can we do that or should we just pick, like pick and mix, pick the ones we want to be as a priority? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Two things for me, I wonder whether in terms of encouraging schools to adopt an inclusive practice and where they don't already and I'm sure most do. We've talked before in this committee about the importance of therapeutic thinking and I wonder whether we could again commend to schools that training that I believe is an offer from the local authority on therapeutic thinking, particularly struck by Flora's experience and making sure that that's recommended to schools. I think that may be a repeat of something we've talked about before, but that can be no bad thing. The second thing I just, I wonder if we can look at ensuring that the voice of our foster carers and adopters is heard. And I think that's for officers probably to think about, how can that be done? It's been so powerful for us on this committee to hear voices at first hand. It would be good to look at systematically how that voice can be heard and I'm assured by some of the conversation that's gone on that that is in place and that commitment is there, but it would be good to keep that under review and to ensure the voice is heard because that's been really powerful today.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Chair. It was wonderful to hear the testimony today and that evidence is really valued. If it's uncomfortable sometimes, it's uncomfortable for a reason. And I started off and I must admit, I feel like I've got out the wrong side of bed this morning, because I do feel there's not enough performance analysis, monitoring data for us to scrutinise over time. So, for example, the delay that Sarah faced in being referred to the kinship team, that's one testimony. How many people are experiencing that? And I just worry that we may not. We definitely know lots is going on and we know lots of good stuff is going on and I think we can be confident that lots of good stuff is going on. All I'm concerned is that we don't seem to have presented to us, let's say, data over time that I think would have been helpful for the scrutiny committee today and maybe at some point in the future. And I'm more than happy for pushback from officers and indeed comments from other members, but my recommendation would be to have some sort of dashboard presented to us that shows that more clearly than the snapshot that we were given and some of the performance data that was more where we are now as opposed to the journey that we're on. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Okay, James?
Yes, I must admit, I haven't got a new recommendation and I'd just like to support councillor Mason. I mean, he's saying exactly what I think and say, that we need data and we need it over a period of time, not just a point in time, but over, so we can see the trends. So, for the example where Sam was mentioning that if we had kept the same number of foster carers over a period of time, we would now have 400, but what period of time is that over? Over five years? So, we need to see and where that has dipped and what interventions have been put in to see what works. So, just supporting this data capturing over a period of time, and it's got to be five years at least. And I know we had the pandemic in the middle of it or just coming out of it, but we know when there's a dip when the pandemic hit, we know the reasons for it, but we want to see the other reasons. So, just supporting councillor Mason's point. Thank you very much.
Bobby Bennett?
May I ask a question back? Because I know that we are incredibly data-rich in children's services and I know that that data is scrutinised at Corporate Parenting, is scrutinised in the Office of House, is scrutinised at the Strengthening Services Board. So, I suppose my question to you as a scrutiny board, is it enough for you to know that that scrutiny is happening? Because replicating a dataset which by the time you come would be out of time and out of context, I don't know how helpful that would be. So, I just wanted to offer that, you know, sort of challenge back. Is it enough that you know that that scrutiny is happening or do you feel that you need more?
Absolutely. For one moment, I don't think we are asking for any more data because there is so much data, it's just the way it's presented. Within this document, there is data, but it's in words in a paragraph of 427 blah blah, sorry, blah blah, doesn't that sound disparaging? But, you know, the way it is shown, when you can actually put it into a graph form, I hate to say it, if we use statistical programming controls, which is a graph that you can actually see over a period of time, it would be so much better and so much more meaningful. And if there is one thing that the NHS does extremely well, is how they report their data to boards and I think we could learn from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other recommendations? Ash?
Sorry. Yeah, I would just, I think I said, I kind of raised in the meeting a bit about the kind of the training, the therapeutic, I think we mentioned therapeutic, but training for kind of members as well as. And, yeah, I mean, and obviously the last thing I said about whether there's some way that we can, you know, train, speak to government regarding, kind of saving us some money that, you know, could be really used within Suffolk for other, you know. So, I think the only thing we didn't kind of really talk about too much in the actual scrutiny was around kind of partnership working. I mean, I know there's something about foster-friendly organisations, I was just going to touch on that, I wonder whether that's, I don't know what our role would be in that as members, but I think, you know, trying to really try to support anything to do with pushing out those positive messages around recruitment. I think we really want to put that in some sort of recommendation that we, you know, like those, you know, really kind of pushing those positive messages around that sort of. I'm not very good at this.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you just to add on to what I said earlier, it's about whether we prioritise, whatever we decide on. I mean, I would suggest a priority is recruitment of more foster carers, you know, that's interesting, but also perhaps parallel with that is campaign, it's already down here, but pushing hard to get foster fees and allowances increased because it might well tempt a number of people. Looking at that percentage of people who said, was 78%, I think we saw earlier, that's a lot of people who are thinking, yes, we like doing it, but actually, you know, are we, we are worth more than this. And that sounds, you know, puree, but I think, you know, they are worth more than this and it will encourage people. And I think, you know, as James says as well, that the data is out there and it's the data that we need to use to be able to support what you're doing. And as Ash says, you know, we do need to be lobbying the current government to recognise that this is a massive funding issue and if they invest now, we know this, then problems will ease off later on for these children who, if they aren't getting the proper support, if they're moved around from pillar to post, don't get stability, are going to be children who are going to grow into problem adults. And I think it's our role, I think, to make sure we do as much as we can to avoid that, but certainly prioritise if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jewel Mason wants to?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Spicer had a word with me before she left and it was regarding teachers and education. I've not long left the teaching profession and I remember, well, one of my classes had six children with trauma. Not all children with trauma, of course, are in adoption or fostering service. And the challenges for teachers are immense when you've also got the expectations of delivering a curriculum and trying to achieve high results. And of course, all teachers aren't equal. You get young teachers, enthusiastic teachers, you get teachers like myself heading out the door. And the training for teachers, I've had trauma-informed training. And so it may be patchy across the county. And I think councillor Spicer's recommendation was, in what ways can the council explore the need for ensuring that training is available to teachers? Not just trauma-informed training, but training regarding looked-after children and adopted children is more consistent across the county to try and minimise the disruption. I mean, as a teacher, sometimes a change of seating plan would fix the issue, but you have to be alive to that. Sometimes you set your class and you don't want to move anybody, but just a change of seating plan so somebody who was in your eye line is no longer in your eye line and you'd be amazed how simple that could be. But regarding councillor Spicer, how can we ensure as a council that we encourage across the county training to be consistent and available to teachers for those range of issues, not just trauma, but looked-after children generally? Because I think I've had far less training on looked-after children than I have had on trauma. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything from the other side of the floor? Please, go ahead.
I was going to say it'd be really interesting if the data could drill down a little bit further, although information in the report drilled down a little bit further, retention of foster carers, I think, is equally as important, if not more than recruitment, you know, retain the experienced carers. And it's only recently that exit interviews, the process for that has changed positively. So, again, our voice has been heard, we felt that it needed to be a manager that actually did the exit interview with the foster carer, because sometimes the problems the foster carers were facing were with their supervisor and social worker. So, the information we receive on exit interviews is not going to be comfortable listening a lot of the time, but it's really important that it is heard and understood so that we can stop other carers from experiencing the same things. So, in the reports and the data, it would be good to have some information behind those exit interviews, what information is being found out, why people are leaving Suffolk and why people are leaving fostering.
Thank you. Anybody else want to contribute?
Sarah or Bobby? Joe, I agree totally with you about teacher training, but the problem is we have academies all over the county. Can this county override those individual academies to say, right, you will need to do this? I mean, is it a matter of negotiating? I totally endorse what Joe's saying, I think that needs to be in there. I'm just not trying to be negative, but I just know that you're going to have to do some skill for negotiating with those academies, because we don't have many schools left, do we, I don't think? Thank you.
Thank you. We have enough maintained schools in Suffolk to make us the biggest academy, if you like to think about us like that. We are influencers, that's absolutely our position with academies and we're building all of the time that real strength and relationship. Our virtual school are really well placed to have this conversation and to help to influence into that space too, so we'll continue doing that. And obviously with our maintained schools, it's a different conversation, but absolutely, this is very close to all of our hearts, so we'll make sure we continue to do that.
Do we have any input suggestions for the forward work programme? I will say that our forward work programme is full, we are full until this year's meetings at the end of March. Has anybody got suggestions going forward or that might be better, see which way the wind's blowing? Okay, sorry.
So, Chair, at the start of this meeting, I told you all that Ofsted were coming in doing a targeted inspection, I don't know when that will be published yet, but I assume that you will want the letter as an information bulletin when it's published.
I'm going to tell everybody then, go home and get something to eat. Thank you all.